I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM and I'll call on Counselor O'Hare to read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Thorold is situated on treaty land. This land is steeped in the rich history of the First Nations such as the Haudenosa'ni, the Hatawanda'ronk, and the Anishinaabe, including the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation. There are many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people from across Turtle Island that live and work in Niagara today. The city of Thorold stands with all Indigenous people, past and present, in promoting the wise stewardship of the lands on which we live.
Thank you, Counselor O'Hare. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda? Oh, sorry. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda, Counselor Sentence, Counselor Longo, as presented? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Adoption of the minutes. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the open and close city council minutes from February 4th and the minutes of the special council meeting on February 5th, 2025? Can I get a mover and a seconder? I got Counselor Decker and Counselor Dedevedus. Are there any errors or omissions? Go ahead, Counselor DeAngelo.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on the special council budget meeting, I know we had a vote at the end of the meeting and I just wanted it noted that I was opposed to moving forward. It's not recorded in the minutes.
We'll make sure that gets duly known.
So it wouldn't be noted through you, Mr. Mayor? It wouldn't be noted in the minutes unless there was a recorded vote that was requested?
But you've made it known now, so we know.
Okay, well, I wish that would have been brought to my attention. I would have called for recorded votes. Sometimes those are political and I just wanted it known that I didn't support the budget. But if it can't be changed, it can't be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Mayor's report. On February 7th, I attended Habitat for Humanity Niagara and Centennial Homes key ceremony, 144 to 150 Mary Street, Thorold South, and the celebration lunch event at John Michaels. What made this event so significant was the partnership between Habitat for Humanity Niagara and Centennial Homes, who constructed the four-unit townhouse complex using their sub-trades and suppliers at no cost to Habitat for Humanity Niagara. Thank you, Centennial Homes, Anthony, Dominic, Joe, and your team, sub-trades and suppliers, for your generosity and commitment to this very important project. Thank you Habitat for Humanity Niagara, CEO Mark Carl, and your committed team, who will, as always, go above and beyond to provide much-needed affordable housing for families. Congratulations to new homeowners Melissa, Brandy, Katie, and Margarita, and your families, who will now be able to call the city of Thorold home. On February 8th, I attended two seedy Saturday events, one held at Niagara College, Niagara in the Lake Campus Greenhouse, a partnership between the Thorold Garden Club and Niagara College; the other was held at the Thorold Center 50+ in partnership with the Thorold Public Library, the TCAG, and the Thorold Age Friendly Committee. Counselor O'Hare also attended both events. On February 10th, CAO Menos Delaria and I met with the new OPG Vice President of Niagara Operations, Nicole Fabro, and OPG Senior Communications Advisor of Stakeholder Relations Niagara, Jennifer Grassi. We discussed OPG plans for Niagara with a focus on the city of Thorold as well as community-related opportunities. On February 15th, BIA Chair Serge Carpino and I presented Karen Brooks, owner of Cosmos Diner, with certificates honoring their 30th anniversary. What a great achievement! On behalf of city council, we thank you for choosing the city of Thorold and wish you much future success. On Friday, February 25th, first, I was joined by Counselor Sentence, Decker, Dedevedus, Regional Counselor Whalen, city staff and guests at the plaque unveiling for the totally revitalized renovated office building at the Lakeview Cemetery. This new office building is now officially open to the public and will allow the city of Thorold to better serve the families and funeral home staff who visit Lakeview Cemetery and address their needs. Thank you, city staff, especially our Public Works and Community Services team, and everyone involved in completing this project on time and within budget. This is just another example of council's commitment to improving our infrastructure and facilities. On Wednesday, February 26th, which is tomorrow, is Pink Shirt Day in recognition of Anti-Bullying Day. Now a movement across the globe, inspired by moments of kindness, empathy, and understanding, we encourage everyone to wear pink tomorrow to symbolize a stance against bullying and send a strong message of support that can make the world a difference. March 8th is International Women's Day, a day to recognize and celebrate the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women and girls. This year's theme is Accelerate Action, which emphasizes the importance of taking swift and decisive steps to achieve gender equality. There will be free family skating during March break at the Frank Doherty Community Arena, 70 Front Street North. Come out with your family and enjoy these free skates. Please visit our website or Facebook page for more information. 2025 summer student recruitment is now open. The city of Thorold is currently accepting applications for a variety of summer positions. Please check the city website for more information. Congratulations to Team Canada on winning the Four Nations Face-Off. The championship game was outstanding. Both Canada and United States put on a performance that exceeded expectations. This event showcased hockey at its finest and brought our country together at an important time. Once again, this showed that sports and the arts are such an important part of a vibrant community. In closing, I want to take a moment to express our sincere appreciation to our Public Works and Community Services team, our Bylaw team, and Communications team, who worked tirelessly during the snow events this month to ensure our streets and pathways were cleared and safe. Your dedication and coordination efforts did not go unnoticed and truly made a challenging situation much more manageable. Once again, thank you. When it comes to our winter maintenance program, we are the gold standard, and I hear it on a regular basis from those who visit our city, they really notice the difference. And that's the end of my mayor's remarks. Up next, we have a presentation from the Niagara Regional Police Services. I'll call on Chief Bill Forte from Niagara Regional Police Services for his presentation, and I see he's got a group with him, and I'll let you introduce everyone. And I thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to come and address council today.
Thank you, your worship, and to you and council, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm joined by Superintendent Mario Alaguteria. He's the Acting Deputy Chief of Community Services, and by the new District Commander in St. Catharines in Thorold, Inspector Sarah Rose. And Sarah will be providing a presentation with respect to some of the placing pressures and issues that may or may not be of interest to yourselves. And the Board Chair, Pat Kiyokio, asked me to share with you that he would be here this evening, but he's at a police labor conference in Toronto that precludes his attending.
I'll see him later this week.
He asked me to mention that.
I appreciate that.
So I guess without further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Inspector Sarah Rose. Sarah was recently promoted to the rank of inspector, and I specifically put her in this position because I knew she would do a great job. She's very community-oriented and has a great track record as a criminal investigator, so maybe I'll invite Sarah to come up. And I'm also joined by our manager of corporate communications, Stephanie Savern, as well. So, thank you, your worship. And I'll be here to answer any questions that council may or may not have for me as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, your worship, and council. I believe we have a slideshow. Again, thank you, Mayor, and members of council for having us here today and for giving us this opportunity to speak. Simply put, here is our mission statement. The Niagara Regional Police Service is dedicated to serving and protecting residents and visitors within the regional municipality of Niagara. In partnership with the community, we shall provide quality policing services with integrity, diligence, and sensitivity. Next slide, please. So here's a quick overview of our current organizational structure. Much like large organizations, it shows the scope of the services and the areas of expertise within the Niagara Regional Police Service. From a uniform perspective, we have over 770 sworn members as part of our authorized strength. On the civilian side, we have over 320 members. So breaking down the organizational chart further, I wanted to give you a snapshot of the various police programs that we have here in Niagara, from the chief's office, emergency services, operational services, and community services. Investigative services and resources above and beyond the number of specifically assigned patrol officers able to assist with more complex needs and investigations, such as the Special Victims Unit, domestic violence, child abuse, human trafficking, and fraud, which we will speak about a little bit later in the presentation, as well as our emergency services, including K-9, tactical officers, and traffic enforcement officers, just to name a few. Most members of the public only see the frontline, uniformed members driving within your community and answering calls for services. But at any time, these specialty units can be deployed to assist where appropriate for that tailored response, which I will speak about in a moment as we go through the anatomy of a call. So next slide, please. So further, we also have operational support projects, executive services, human resources, technology services, finance, and asset management. I would like to draw your attention to this slide, if you believe the next slide. Sorry, thank you. I would like to draw your attention to this slide detailing our yearly calls for service, which, as you can see, are projected to continue to increase on a go-forward basis. You'll notice that the graph shows a considerable increase over the next five years, which is in alignment with the two graphs depicting population growth. So slide number six, please. I would also like to point out the increase in calls and those calls that are particularly complex in nature. When we look at mental health calls, domestic violence calls, armed and barricaded person calls, as well as homicides, we observe how they consume a substantial number of resources, inclusive of frontline officers and detectives. So for example, regarding mental health-related calls, in 2023, we received over 9,400 calls for service, which is almost 26 calls per day, at an average of 19 hours spent by officers per call. What I meant by that is when you take the total hours that frontline officers and detectives spend on a single call, on average, is 19 hours. Another example regarding domestic violence, in 2023, we received approximately 6,500 calls for service. That is almost 18 calls per day. The average time required to investigate each call is 37 hours. Calls involving armed and barricaded individuals are particularly complex, demanding specialized support and sometimes intervention from trained negotiators. In 2023, we handled over 880 of these calls, about two per day, with each one requiring an average of 88 hours to resolve. Homicide investigations are also highly demanding. These cases involve securing scenes, canvassing evidence and witnesses, and preparing extensive documentation for court, placing considerable pressure on both frontline and detectives. Unfortunately, this number could continue to rise further, impacting resources. As you can see, over the past few years, we have experienced a high number of incidents, and those calls are also some of the most complex in nature. So next slide, please. So when we examine how calls for service are generated, there are several streams with which we become aware of, where incidents are reported, then we move through the process. A 911 emergency call that is placed to our communication center is one of the most common and visible methods that calls are generated. Across the region, residents are able to walk into a police station and directly speak with a police officer and make a report. On general patrol throughout the community, our frontline patrol members may see an incident of concern, a traffic violation, or a crime in progress, and initiate involvement. We encourage members of the public to utilize the non-emergency line for matters that require police attention but are not necessarily of an urgent nature, requiring immediate emergency And we continue to examine and expand online reporting capabilities to better serve our community as well. Then, a member is dispatched for a call for service, or when appropriate, referred to an alternative response option. This can include involvement of our mobile support unit or the collision reporting center for minor motor vehicle collisions. Calls for service are triaged by our communications unit. Members, where it is determined what response is required, police, fire, EMS, or all three. All calls for service are subject to an investigation or review to determine if additional follow-up is required. Criminal charges are warranted, or a referral to another agency or community partner is more appropriate. I underscore that every call for service is unique and may vary based on the nuances of the incident. So next, I'm going to go into the anatomy of a call. So as we referenced earlier, frontline response is often the most visible aspect of community policing. I wanted to take this opportunity to be able to walk you through an anatomy of a call for service. While this example is from a call from Niagara Falls, I want to underscore that this example is just one of a variety of calls that require a complex collaboration of resources to best serve our community. To start, our two district frontline officers who patrol in Niagara Falls and Niagara the Lake were called to a hotel in the area of Buchanan and Kitchener Street. To set the stage, this is an excerpt from the 911 call that came in from our communication center. Okay, we'll just pass that then. So this is a routine call for service, which initially came in with limited information that can quickly change and evolve. Based on the initial information of a domestic disturbance, there was a uniform response dispatched to attend to assess the situation. When officers arrived on scene, they discovered that the male involved had barricaded himself inside a bathroom, saying he had a gun. Given the information, additional resources were requested by the uniform officers on scene, which saw sergeants dispatched to attend, along with more uniform officers, which included the mobile crisis response, rapid response team, which is a uniform officer paired with a mental health professional to respond to persons in crisis. At this point, the call is elevated to the awareness of the duty officer, an inspector who oversees response and resources across the region, who begins to assess the situation and ensure that the response is coordinated with available resources and activating further resources as required. At this point, members on scene would be ensuring that the area is contained and that public safety is maintained while further resources were assessed and dispatched. Shortly after, due to the nature of the threat of a firearm being present, our emergency task unit is summoned to coordinate a tactical response. With the information present, the ETU members are enacted, which includes protocol, to bring out those members along with required resources. This includes the incident commander to oversee the tactical response, including members of the tactical support group, which is marine, traffic enforcement, and K-9, along with negotiators and scribes. During this time, due to the location of the call, our real-time operations center was involved to monitor communications while accessing available CCTV cameras in the area to further assist officers with the response. While this is happening, please keep in mind that calls for service do not stop. There are other calls for service across the region that still need to be addressed and resourced. While the tactical response is assembling, detectives from our criminal investigations branch are involved in assessing the available information to assist uniform officers behind the scenes. This includes interviewing witnesses and et cetera. Due to the nature of the call, the duty officer engaged our corporate communications unit to reach the on-call media relations member to assist with social media messaging to inform members of the public that there is a heavy police presence in the area. Ultimately, once the incident was resolved, a media release was disseminated outlining details and the charges that were laid. With a call of this nature, officers, especially the incident commander, are moving through processes to ensure that public safety is balanced, along with the individual safety, and to ensure that we are mitigating risks. Officers exhaust all options and tactics, with negotiators making contact with the person while the process is unfolding to get judicial authorization to enter the space. The ultimate goal is a peaceful surrender with cooperation. In this case, once it was determined that the male was alone in the room and there was no imminent threat or other persons, the entire process slows down to negotiate a peaceful surrender. Approximately three hours later, after attempting contact by phone, loud hailer, and throw phone, ETU members were granted judicial authorization to make a tactical entry to arrest the male. Once he was taken into custody, he was assessed by paramedics, then transported to our central holding unit on charges of uttering threats, firearm-related offenses. So once transported to our headquarters facility, he was processed by special constables and a special constable supervisor to ensure that he was advised of his rights, searched, fingerprinted, and photographed by being interviewed by detectives prior to being interviewed by detectives, and then to a bail hearing the following morning. At this point, officers who were involved in the initial response are processing the scene through forensic analysis, writing their reports, preparing a crown brief, and continuing to interview persons and witnesses involved. Please keep in mind, as well, this is just the person-management aspect with the individual now being cared for and transported to the court appearance by special constables before he was remanded into custody and transported to the Niagara Detention Center. From a court-management perspective, the incident is now reviewed by case-preparation specialists and quality assurance unit, and charge investigators, to ensure the crown brief is fulsome and complete to allow for a timely disclosure. Once a case enters the court system, there is an entire system behind the scenes that is enacted. Our CPIC Records Management Unit enters and charges within the system, requesting documents, updating information, to ensure files are accurate and the case moves through the justice system. Uniform Crime Reporting reviews the incident in its entirety ahead of providing statistics to the province. Disclosure clerks are involved, as are crime analysts, ultimately to determine trends and inform proactive police response. A single call for service, be it an armed barricaded person or a simple theft from auto, works through a myriad of processes, units, members, and systems as it moves through the initial call-taking, uniform response, and beyond. Ultimately, in this case, there was no firearm discovered. However, officers must act upon the information that is presented to ensure community and officer safety. The potential for high-risk calls such as this is ever-present and increasing rapidly across the region, with external influences from neighboring communities, coupled with increasing prevalence of firearms. In this case, while the public generally would have seen 19 frontline, uniform officers, ultimately 35 sworn members, and 10 professional staff from across the service touch this specific call directly. This, of course, doesn't take into account the units across the service, such as recruiting, member support, quartermasters, fleet, training, HR, and payroll, which support the overall functioning of the service. As you can see, one example for a call for service that quickly evolves and involves so much more than the visible response. Appropriate that even the most routine call for service goes well beyond a uniform member showing up, moving through the communication unit, with all of the resulting processes that come into play depending on the unique circumstances of each and every incident. I highlight this as an example of a larger call for service. However, as we see most days, routine calls for service continue to keep our members extremely busy, all of which result in significant resources, both for the initial response with the front-loading of investigations and the continuous work that goes into the aftermath as well. This call is the top calls for service for Thorold. Year over year, we consistently see these areas as the main calls for service within Thorold: motor vehicle collisions, impaired driving, theft, driving complaints, and fraud-related calls. So next slide, please. So to speak about fraud. Initiative developed in December of 2022 in response to multiple grandparent emergency scams in Grimsby and West Lincoln. Fraudsters would contact the victims by telephone and provide a story that a family member is in custody and cash bail is required to assist with release. Detectives from the Central Fraud Unit attended all financial institutions in Grimsby and met with branch managers to increase awareness of these scams. They provided information, documents, and encouraged managers to share with the frontline staff to question all large cash withdrawals, particularly with elderly victims. This program was eventually extended to the entire Niagara region, and contact information was obtained from all branch managers. The Central Fraud Unit maintains regular communication with Niagara branch managers in a group email distribution, keeping them informed on new fraud trends. So next slide, please. So traffic speeding and traffic enforcement for Thorold. So in 2024, 846 provincial offense notices were issued relating to speed violations, along with 347 warnings. Speed enforcement projects. Project Speed Alert is a proactive patrol which focuses on rural areas. Community safety zones. We have Collier Road South between Highway 58 ramp and St. David's Road, and the collaborative partnership with Niagara Region Vision Zero, which aims to make roads safer and eliminate injuries, fatalities across the Niagara region. In addition, I would encourage anyone with specific concerns to utilize our traffic hotline, which will allow our traffic enforcement unit to conduct proactive patrols in areas of concern. To address these issues, you can call the phone number of 289-248-1060, or you can email trafficcomplaints@niagarapolice.ca. This is an online form for the public website as well. So the last slide, please. So officers assigned to one district Thorold take part in several crime prevention and community engagement initiatives throughout the year. Officers regularly take part in Lock It or Lose It campaign all year round and actively conduct foot patrols in the downtown to engage with residents and businesses in the area. So that's my presentation. I'd be open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. The one I just saw right there about, that was one of my questions. The BIA Counselor Sentence and I both said on the BIA board members, and also I've been in business for 37 years downtown. And I mean, back in the 2000s and early, late 90s... And I remember back in the two thousands and early, late nineties, the police used to walk the beat, and we had an office downtown, and increased visibility, community engagement, crime prevention. And I just want to know, is this a program we can have back in Thorold like it used to be? Like, we used to have them all the time walking the beat, not just the odd time?
So, I can tell you, and through, through you, Mayor, I can tell you that our community engagement unit is engaged with the BIA. I know Constable Mike Matuidjo is, is very dedicated to the city of Thorold. He does walk the beat quite regularly with another member of our core unit, engaging with business owners. He attends the library. I spoke with him this morning. So, he, he is very active within the community. I'm sure most of you are aware of, of who Constable Matuidjo is. He's very dedicated to the city of Thorold. So, I, I, if you have some areas of concern that we can target more regularly, but I do on a regular basis, he is walking the beat in Thorold.
Yeah, that program started, just want to make sure it stays. Another question I had, I'm not sure if it's in the police budget, a couple of BIA members want to know if the police can install cameras in a couple of areas downtown Thorold.
So, we are in the works of implementing some, some cameras within the area. I'm hoping to have an announcement soon. We're working through some, some issues with IT and, and other, other, other concerns, but we, it is something that is on our radar, and we'll most definitely be looking at that.
Okay, just have one more question. What is the number of police officers who are specifically dedicated to serving Thorold? Like, at all times, they're in Thorold? Do we have like a number, like five at all times?
We have, sorry, didn't interrupt you there. We have two dedicated call signs for the city of Thorold. Thorold's very fortunate to be attached to the city of St. Catherine's in our policing world. So, you have an additional large number, fourteen, fifteen officers at the ready to come and keep your community safe, along with our community engagement unit who, during their shifts, proactively patrol this area quite often.
Okay. And one last question, you know, with the budget going up, are there grants and, that you can hit from the government and government programs? And do you share resources with other police forces that can help out?
Thank you for your questions, through you, Chair. I think if I could, I'd, I'd like to make a kind of a general statement and then, and then speak to that in response to a couple of the questions that have already been asked. And as worship has the benefit of having been present for our budget submission whereby one of the things we really want to do is be community-centric, data-driven, and intelligence-led. In terms of our provincial and federal grant funding, we have secured about ten million dollars in provincial grant monies for 2024. The, the provincial fiscal year goes April one to April one, so those processes will be initiated in the coming months. Having said that, we are in a bit of a standstill right now, given the provincial elections, so Treasury Board and all those related processes are, are silent right now. So, but yeah, we do secure provincial grant money, and we have recently applied for and been successful in securing provincial, or federal grant money with a particular focus on youth-related prevention and intervention approaches.
And congratulations on your first year of being the chief.
Oh, thank you so much. Yeah, I'm very fortunate, I've got a great team that I work with, and I've had really positive experience with elected officials and senior city staff and municipal and regional staff.
And it's performing well? No problems?
Well, I, I wouldn't say I sleep ten hours a night, but it's going pretty well.
Great. Okay, thank you for coming in, I really appreciate it.
No, thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I really appreciate you guys coming in today. Appreciate everything you do. Most of us think nine-one-one call, arrest, that's it. Don't have to worry about anything else, that's what we see on TV, so I appreciate everything you guys do in between there as well. And I, the BIA really appreciates Mike Matuidjo and Jason McCarthy. It's been helpful for me when I need to get ahold of somebody, so kudos to them if they're up for anything advancement, they're, they're fantastic. And Mike is actually a Thorold South boy, so he, he, we go back a long way. So, thank you very much for everything you do. I appreciate everything. I just had one question while you're here, because I was gonna ask something later at another meeting somewhere. Cameras to catch vandalism in parks, and I'm taking advantage because you're here, is it doable or not doable from, from your point of view? Like, if we said to you, we're having these, a lot of trouble, can you put cameras up or is that just not done nowadays?
Thank you, through you, Chair. We are really, I don't want to say, in a professionally aggressive manner, trying to expand the footprint of our real-time operational center.
Okay.
The real-time operational center is, is, is a, an office, it's probably this size with cameras and feeds from across the region.
Okay.
And as Inspector Rose referenced, we are in the throes of trying to secure additional cameras to provide us with additional intelligence.
Okay.
And we're also looking at hotspot mapping so that we can make really evidence-informed decisions.
Temporary type of this spot, okay.
Assign resources to the right place at the right time.
Fantastic to hear. Thank you for everything.
Yeah, three, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, guys, for taking time out of your busy days to be here, we really appreciate it. Just a quick question, I'm, I'm, Councilor D'Angelo and I sit on the road safety committee, and it's my second term on it, so I'm always a big speed person, trying to slow people down in my neck of the woods. I, I'm just curious, I know when I call for anything, I call the well, I'm in St. John's, just on behind, in behind Maryville Speedway that way, and, and it seems like we're attached to Welland out there. And they've, they, sometimes they complain to me that they've only got two people on, and so I just wonder, is there any way just to, like, i- is it a big budget issue to get some more out on road safety? Is traffic calming, speed calming, safety, speed traps and that?
So, through you, Mayor, and if there are any issues, I do encourage you to email our traffic, thetrafficcomplaints.niagara.ca, or call that hotline. You can also call and generate a call for service. If we know that there are hotspots for speed and for traffic complaints, then, then we can definitely put our officers out there to mitigate any, any safety concerns that residents have. At niagarapolice.ca.
Sorry, Mr., yeah, but that's what I was gonna ask. Thank you so much. Thanks for...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Chief Forty. Chief Forty, thank you very much for coming in. We really appreciate you taking the time to come to counsel. My question is, Thorold has a very large footprint, as you know, and we have a lot of special neighborhood communities. And some are a little out of the way. I'll reference Port Robinson, for example. Do you have a particular time assigned to when Port Robinson is patrolled, or is it only on an on-call basis?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. One of the things that law enforcement agencies across the country are very cautious about doing is publicly sharing when they will be patrolling in a specific area for obviously operational reasons, but our patrol time that we choose or we strive to have is forty percent proactive time for our police officers when they're not on a call for service. It's not a target that we're hitting, but it is a target that we are striving to achieve. You know, I think about the question I heard earlier, and every community that I have an opportunity to go and speak with, every single one of them talks about traffic, and every single one of them says, I'd like to see more police officers. So, it is something that we hear often, and, you know, as part of our budget submissions, we try to be fiscally responsible with also trying to ensure adequate and effective policing. So, we are, we do have a traffic enforcement unit that we try to deploy in a strategic manner. You know, the primary thing that we try to do is reduce collisions and reduce fatalities. Like, that's our ultimate goal, is it's not to generate income or to get fines, it's to try to enhance road safety. So, we try to pick the areas where the, we have the highest volume crashes or collisions to, to deploy our members across the entire region.
So, Chief Forty, I'm, I'm also more concerned about public safety and personal safety in these communities. I respect and understand that traffic is a big issue and a, and a great concern, but just the presence of a car, a police car in the neighborhood, as you know, serves an important role in itself. So, coming back to my question, you don't have a particular assignment to say, well, we should visit Port Robinson once this week, twice this week, once every two weeks, I'm not sure. So, that, that was kind of more of what I'm...
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
That's okay. No, it's all very good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the question is, do you have an assigned period of time that you will send cars to an area such as Port Robinson, or is it only a per-call basis?
I, I can't stand here and say that, you know, we send them to a certain neighborhood in their, any particular neighborhood in the region a certain number of times. What I can say to you is that our supervisors monitor the activities of the constables working on the road and direct them out to areas where we can get enhanced visibility. One thing that you said that I really think is important is there is a crime rates and there is the perception of crime, even if there is no crime in a neighborhood, if there's a perception of crime and you feel safe, that is what is most important to the residents. Well, I completely agree with, with, I think what you're suggesting is we should have directed patrols to every neighborhood. In a perfect world, we would have police officers on every corner, but as, as all of you know, that's not unrealistic, and we try to be as efficient as we can to ultimately provide service for all the residents in the region.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilor Hanley, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in the region in general, if I could ask a question, knowing that the region of Niagara is growing substantially, city of Thorold being the fourth fastest community growing in Ontario, is there any plans in the future to add districts within the region of Niagara? We currently have six districts, I know that, one, two, three, five, six, and eight, and I'm thinking with the ever-growing population, is it down the road, more districts, more satellite offices? Please?
Yes, thank, thank you for your question, through you, Chair. Yes, we are in the throes of developing a master facility plan. One of the things that we are engaged with the region on is doing, having an accurate understanding of all the communities that are being built in the region, and as you referenced, we hear regularly that Thorold, I was told it was the fastest growing, you just told me it's the fourth.
The fourth fastest in Ontario, the eighth fastest in Canada.
He hears that all the time from me, Councilor Hanley.
Okay, I appreciate that.
But yes, we are, we trying to be, get ahead of it to develop a long-term master plan for our facilities, including training and, and storefronts for communities to enhance visibility, kind of in keeping with the previous question.
Okay, thank you for your presentation and all that you do. I know it's a tough go out there for these messed up, and I appreciate you coming here to counsel tonight. And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just reference, if we, if I could get the number and the email that people, residents could, if they have traffic concerns or any concerns...
We'll get that...
Forwarding to me, it'd be greatly appreciated.
We'll get that sent out to all the council, but we'll also get it on our social media, Councilor Hanley.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? I think Councilor D'Angelo had his hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief Forty, coming. Nice to see you again, it's been a while since we've worked together, but I appreciate all your efforts. I don't think people realize how much work goes in behind the scenes and that you're, I know when I was on the board, there was a big focus on getting as many frontline officers out on the road, because that's really, as, as you mentioned, the, the visibility, people see them, and it just helps impact the perception of what's going on out there. I know you just touched on it briefly with Councilor Hanley regarding the potential of putting another district in or realigning the districts, but as we move forward and as there's pockets of population growing, especially in Thorold, it's a lot in the southern part of our community, which is probably part of the Welland Division in terms of some of it, some of it not, but is that something that, I know sometimes physical buildings aren't what really are needed, it's more police officers on the road in their vehicles. Are you looking at jigging some of the lines to make sure that there's so many, so many people living in a pocket where you're one of the districts, is that that number may be changing, where the allotment of officers might change? Is, is that something that's being looked in the facilities master plan, or is that something beyond that?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. It is a part of our RFP that we're developing for our master plan to also do a, a review of our, I don't want to call it zones, but our districts and our, the way we're physically located across the region to ensure that we optimize response times, resources, travel time, all those things that provide for a more efficient police organization. So, those are exactly the things that we're looking at in addition to our workload studies. We actually did two workload studies, one with a shift relief factor and one with an actual relief factor to try to ensure that we're being as efficient as we can with our resources.
Okay, yeah, because it's not always a physical building that makes a difference, police cars and where they're distributed in terms of effectively managing other situations. So, I appreciate that. The other question I had regards road traffic, like myself, I sit on the traffic safety committee with Councilor Rose. We do get a lot of concerns regarding traffic complaints, traffic issues, but one of the things that sort of captured my attention was when I looked at the slides up there, you had over five hundred motor vehicle collisions, and that's just in Thorold alone, the five hundred in a year? So, what, what I'd like, and I don't know if it's possible, can you share some of that info, like, I don't expect it tonight, but maybe share some of that information with the road safety committee? Like, are these traffic collisions happening at the same location, what's causing them? Is it something Public Works might have to do in terms of how the road is? So, when, when we're talking about traffic safety, it's not necessarily always just bad driving habits, but sometimes it may be other things, and that's something that maybe if you can share with us the reasons for the collision, where they're happening with the road safety committee, that's something they could work on and try to come up and develop a plan that's not just law enforcement, but also our own community to make our roads safer. Is that something that can be done?
Thank you for your question, through you, Chair. Yes, absolutely, it's something that we're doing for one of the other regions. Our corporate analyst is preparing those sorts of reports, Dr. Hector Perez, so we can, we can do that, and either myself or Inspector Rose can, can facilitate that.
Yeah, if you, if you, Mr. Mayor, if you could provide maybe some analysis in 2024 with the data that was up there, that might be helpful in helping the road safety committee. So, I appreciate that.
That, that would be a good thing, and if you want to, if that went through to my office, then we can make sure that they, they get that information.
Yeah, because, because like I said, we're all in it together to make the roads safer, and if we can work together and it's, if it's something that the city can do, another stop sign or some road enhancements or, or something that can do that, so I'd be appreciative. The other one, and again, I agree, if we could distribute those phone numbers and the email...
We'll get that out.
Like, generally, I tell people, it's important that if you have a concern, that you report it, because the more you report it, the more it becomes known by those that have to service those concerns. If they're not aware of it, then they won't be able to service it. So, I do see a lot of police cars pulling people over and offering tickets, especially in school zones, so I do appreciate the work that you do there. I live right in between two of them, and, and I see that on a regular basis, so I do appreciate the work that you do. Those are my, my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Again, I appreciate the presenters, the time you've taken, and the efforts that you do to make our community safer. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Devenus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, we're fortunate to have a lot of Brock students in our community and a lot of Niagara College students, but St. Patrick's Day is coming up, and it's always a major concern to Thorold. They've been great the past couple of years. What's your plan for St. Patrick's Day? Because Monday's gonna be crazy, the students will be out, you know, the weather's gonna be nice, so it's another excuse to party hard, and...
I can tell you that, I can tell you that our... I can tell you that, I can tell you that our, we have a group which includes Niagara Regional Police Services, Jason's Group, Bylaw, everybody there work together, and they'll be meeting prior to that, and we always make sure we have a plan in place.
Yes, our actual, our first meeting, we're having a meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay, and I just want to comment on your response time and how you keep informative. We had a call, and it was great how you respond and you keep us in the loop, how you told the officer can't make it there in another 10, 15 minutes. Your customer service is excellent, and I'm really, it's really good to see such a big force with a lot of employees. This still strives for great customer service.
Thank you. Yes, community policing is at the forefront for us, for sure.
Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing that, my only question, Chief, and I think we've talked about this, and you mentioned, I know it's part of what you're putting together with your RFP and going through all that about having a community offices. Can you elaborate on that? Because that's something I know that I get asked a lot, so.
Thank you, your worship. One of the things that we are looking at is our, as the region grows, and we want to enhance our visibility, to have a footprint, not only bricks and mortar, and when I say bricks and mortar, I don't mean large police detachments. I mean places that we can go, be visible, if we have to stop, go to the washroom, do some paperwork, I guess I'm dating myself when I say that, electronic data entry, that we can do things and then be in the, be in the community right away, and have a place for our, our members to bring somebody in for an interview or to, to deal with an issue in a timely manner. We feel that if we can do that, we will get to know the communities better by being embedded in the communities. So, in essence, as we're growing as an organization and becoming larger, our hope is that we can, we can build a network of police buildings that would actually allow for almost boutique policing where you get to really know your community. And by doing that, you know, it might mean that you get out at lunch and you walk down the street and go grab a coffee and talk to a couple of different store owners along the way, build those bridges that can get lost when you're traveling significant distances to respond to calls for service. So, it really is something that we're trying to do, really community-centric, baking into the, the community. And I think by virtue of our creating a master plan, you know, the things that we're trying to put in place today, we may not reap the benefits in some places for four, five, 10 years, but at least we have a vision moving forward that will, will serve the long-term needs of our, of our communities, our businesses and our citizens.
So, again, Chief, I want to thank you, and I want to thank Sarah, Stephanie, and Mario for coming to our council tonight, and we really appreciate keeping the lines of communication open. And I know that our council supports you 100% in the work you're doing, and you know I do at the region. And keep up the good work, and we'll continue to work together and build this partnership and make it stronger. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you for having us. And what I would say is, if any, for you or any of the members of council, if any concerns come up, you feel you would like us to come back to address those concerns, we're not, we're not opposed to hearing what we can do better. It's important for us to, you know, it's nice to hear that we're doing a good job, but it's also important for us to get feedback about what we can do better, and I invite that sort of feedback going forward as well. So, thank you for your support, and I look forward to continuing with the relationship.
Thanks, once again. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now to delegations, and we have two delegations respecting item 14-6 being a motion from Councillor DeRose respecting actions to address mental health, addiction, and homelessness. And in accordance with our procedural bylaw, the delegations will be heard, and then the motion will follow directly after. So, I'd like to welcome Stephen Seuss, a member of the public, for his delegation, and remind you that you have a maximum of 10 minutes. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you for your indulgence, your worship. I'm here tonight to speak on mental health, homelessness, and addiction. The Niagara region has been under a state of emergency for mental health, homelessness, and addiction for about two years now. Thorold was also supportive in that state of emergency and remain under it. So, tonight is about follow-up. It's about bringing some actionable items for these issues. I'll start with the Indigenous community. The suicide rate is three times higher in the Indigenous community than non-Indigenous community. So, over the past couple of years, I've been working to implement an Indigenous mobile crisis unit, and I met with the Ontario Health and the Ontario Ministry of Indigenous Affairs on this matter. I spent a few months in Windsor myself, so before I went to Windsor, I was talking to the provincial government about this. Recently, we've been able to gain traction on the Indigenous Mobile Mental Health Crisis Unit. We have the support of Councillor DeRose, of course. We have the support of Mayor Jim DiAdati and Mayor Matt Sisco in St. Catherine's, and of course, Mayor Jim DiAdati in Niagara Falls. So, this, I, I am really gung-ho on the creation of this unit, and I'm asking tonight for the City of Thorold to ask the Niagara region for a staff report on the creation and implementation of the Indigenous Mobile Mental Health Crisis Unit. Furthermore, I'm asking for City of Thorold to ask the Niagara region to create an Indigenous Housing and Homeless Action Plan, because in one of the Niagara counts previous to 2024, the one before that, there were 22% of individuals who identified as Indigenous in our homelessness count. And then homelessness has now increased to 701 from 665 as of the 2024 homeless count, and that's regional data. We are at 770 overdoses in the region as of 2024. So, I think one of the huge strategies, someone who has recovered from addiction myself, I wish there was more preventative education for drug addiction. It ends in grade nine, so the mandatory course for health and phys ed credit ends in grade nine, so students don't have to take that beyond that point. So, I'm asking the municipalities to work with the local area school boards, Brock University and Niagara College, to deliver more preventative drug education. There, during, a few years back, there was a billboard about, from the region about the dangers of marijuana. Where are the billboards for the dangers of opiates? People are dying. We need to, we need to take action here. And, Mr. Mayor, you have a front seat at the region, so I ask that you be very vocal in preventative drug education for the region, more preventative drug education for young people especially. Also, over the past few years since 2019, I've hosted a public summit on mental health, homelessness, and addiction. This year, we're hosting our fifth annual summit at the Port Robinson Community Center Hall, and a few Thorold councillors, I'm happy, really happy, because they've RSVP'd, and they'll be attending the event. We have a great panel this year of six individuals between lived experience municipal government and agency representation, such as Past Stone. We have Start Me Up Niagara attending, and we have Indigenous representation, because the Aboriginal Health Centre will be attending, handing out surveys to expand their client list at this event. But I'd, I'd now like this event to evolve. I'd like this public summit to evolve, and I would like the region to start hosting a mental health, addiction, and homelessness summit for, for our area. I think, I think, you know, after five times of doing it, you know, it needs, it needs to be enhanced, and the message needs to get out, because not, not a lot of people know what the region is doing and the work that they do, Mayor Ugalini, and, you know, that's a great opportunity for them to share the work they're doing and to garner improvements in the system. What could be done better? Another part of the motion that I have put together here with Carmen DeRose, Councillor Carmen DeRose, is to request that the provincial Ontario Government access alternative revenue streams for social housing, because property taxes just can't take it anymore. Social housing is funded by primarily property tax, and if you go back to 1999, that's when social housing was downloaded onto the municipalities, and it's been an expensive, expensive venture. So, we're asking in this motion that the Ontario Government provide those revenue streams so that we can continue to support the building of social and affordable housing in our area. And I would like to see the City of Thorold put together a collective of resources for the treatment of mental health and, for, for mental health and addiction treatment options in Thorold. So, a made-in-Thorold solution, just adding more information to your socials and your website about where people can find the help and support. On, it's, the more places you post it, the more places you have it, the better, the better the outcome. And you might, that one person might be stumbling upon the City of Thorold website, and they'll get the help, access to the help that they need and the resources that they need. This is an important one in the motion for me personally, because I faced a lot of stigma as somebody who was homeless and addict and mentally ill, and that's condemning the discrimination of people who are mentally ill, addicted, homeless, and unhoused in our community. I think that's, I think that's a great show of support to those vulnerable population in Thorold. If tonight you could condemn that type of discrimination. I, I've seen a lot of discrimination in my life as an Indigenous person, but as someone, of course, who also has lived experience with these issues. Mayor Ugalini, I, I always thank this council for their unwavering support on the issues of mental health, homelessness, and addiction. This is a committed council, and I'm proud to stand with this council once again in, in tackling these important issues. Thank you for your indulgence, Chair.
Thank you, Stephen. Are there any questions for Stephen? Go ahead, Councillor DeRose.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Stephen, you want to just tell everybody when the conference is?
Yes, thank you, Councillor DeRose. So, the Summit for Mental Health, Poverty, and Addiction is this Saturday, March 1st, 2025, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. There will be a question-and-answer period for two hours, followed by a one-hour reception. Snacks will be free of charge, but we are selling pop and water and having a 50-50 draw in support of Past Stone Children's Mental Health. And my father has also raised about $850 for the cause on Saturday, so I'm very proud of him. So, if anyone is interested in donating to Past Stone Children's Mental Health for, to support their services, that would be very much appreciated, Councillor DeRose.
Thank you, Stephen.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Councillor DeDeVine.
I just had a comment. Stephen, great job. You're very, very educated on this, and it takes a lot of courage for you to get behind this. You've been through a lot, and you're still standing. You should be proud of yourself. A lot of these problems, I agree, they come from drugs. People don't realize, the one time you try a drug, they are so addictive now, it changes your life. It sends you to home, you'd be, come homeless. It, it, it adds to so many crimes through our, through our communities, all because of the drugs. And we can't, we need education on this topic, big time, because you have to hit them when they're young, because once they have that one shot, it'll change their life. So, keep up the good work, and I'm glad you're here and spreading the word.
Thank you, councillor. That's very much appreciated. Go ahead, councillor, sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, Stephen. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I, we always condemn discrimination. I think Thorold City Council's been behind you 100%, behind Past Stone's 100%, and will continue to do that. I will support your motion, but like I showed you earlier, anybody who's interested, there's a couple of really good articles on the region's website as to what they're up to and what they're, what they have tapping into the $425 million that's available, and their, their initiatives that they have going address a lot of what, what you've said tonight. So, if you, if you get a chance...
Let's limit this to questions, because the motion's going to go on the floor, and then you can comment.
Done.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions? If it's not, then wait till the motion comes on the floor, then you can comment, okay? Anyone else? Questions? Okay, seeing that, can I thank you for your presentation, Stephen, and we're going to move on now to the second presenter, which is Cheryl Rowe, a member of the public, and her delegation. And again, you have up to 10 minutes, Cheryl.
Thank you. First, I just want to say good evening to everybody, and thank you for having me here, and, and I just kind of wanted to express who I am. I, I am a school bus driver. I was a personal support worker. I worked in a satellite home for the Hamilton Psychiatric Hospital on Concession Street in Hamilton. I dealt with 56 patients, saw mental health. And lately, within my family life and friends, I have dealt with mental health, addiction, homelessness. So, it, it, it comes from my heart. The feelings of having family members that are addicted is, is harsh, especially when you know what the problem is and how it started, and, and you feel, I guess, lost in trying to help them, because you really don't know, because they're all individual. They all have an individual psychosis that happens after they've done drugs, and, you know, you just, you have a very hard time dealing with it. And even mental health workers, social workers, have a very hard time with dealing with drug addiction and mental health, and it leads to homelessness, right? So, a lot of them coincide together, right? They work together. It happens. Like, you have mental health issues, you become addicted, you become homeless. So, I'm going to go on with the affordable housing. I just got to bring up that part of my speech. Okay, so, the statistics that presently just came out here in the Niagara region, we have, like, based on the year 2024, there was 701 homeless compared to 2021 at 665 homeless. So, like, it's increasing. And breaking that down, what hurts the most is there's 101 children. There's 282 unsheltered, eight in motels, 280 in safe bed stats, you know, abused women and children, 131 in transitional housing. But we have to realize that this does not include the many that are living in automobiles or couch surfing. So, I just, affordable housing, yes, I know the region is working hard with Welland and Port Coburn. It's been in the news, but we need much more than that. So, if we actually get the province, like, if we, if we take and, and ask the province to, like, if we, if we upload social housing back to the province, then we could access more funding. Like, with these, with these statistics, we need to work together to enhance communication and collaborate between municipalities. On all of these issues, mental health, affordable housing, homelessness, and addictions, we need to bring forth motions and adapting other municipalities' motions. And like I said, upload social... And like I said, upload social housing back to the province. It would be beneficial to all residents of Niagara. We don't need any more increased taxes. Property taxes have increased. There's residents that are, you know, $50, $100 before they're gonna lose their houses, because they can't afford the increase in the food, the increase in, in gas, hydro, property taxes gone up, you know, uh, car insurance goes up. So, you know, some people are just dollars away from losing their houses. And many have become homeless because of, we are living in, in, in dire straits in many areas from all of the increases and everything that we've, we've endured in the last, how many years? Four, five years? So we truly need a solution based upon affordable housing. I know we can lobby the provincial government and ask them if, if we could do rent caps, bring that back. I don't know. But I know what I am looking at doing, um, for addictions provincially, and that is, I want, as soon as the election's over, I want to be able to sit down and discuss with one of our MPPs in the Niagara region, just ask them if they can look at a motion or amending the Health Act, because there's mental health in the Health Act. But there isn't addictions. And I ran across this because my niece is in that situation and we wanted to form her, to get her the help that she needed. We went to the Justice of the Peace, we filled out all the paperwork, but because it said addictions, she turned us away. She's severe, my niece is severe. And I'm like, how can we change this? Three days later, she's needing hospital help. And my brother took her to the hospital and the doctor formed her. The Justice of the Peace didn't three days before that, but the doctor got to form her, formed her 72 hours. 72 hours does nothing. They released her, she denied everything, she lied. Okay, so when you see this happening, there's no hope for the family to help their family member. Even friends, the same thing. So I'm looking at the province to change the Health Act in order to help the addicted.
Cheryl, it's 10 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, 10 seconds.
Okay, I just wanted, I wanted to, um, touch on, Touch on the ed, uh, the addiction education. Um, I, I believe Stephen hit that on the nose, like it, it's something that needs to happen. I worked in the E.L. Crosley Cafeteria and we had, you know, all the students come through and then afterwards, all the ones that, you know, uh, smoked pot, uh, came in afterwards. And, and you can, the, the difference between the regular students that don't do anything to the students that smoke pot, you know, like it, yeah. So I just wanted to touch on that. But I want to thank you for allowing me to be here. Um,
Yeah, I want to thank you for coming. Any questions? None, Cheryl, I want to thank you for coming. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have two presentations. Now we'll put, I think, actions.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have a second?
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, could I say something before or should I say it after? Just this, okay. Um, so my motion reads as thus, Corporation of the City Thorold acts as follows. Number one, the Council for the City of Thorold condemns this discrimination of people living with mental illness, people who are unhoused, homeless and/or people living with addiction. That staff be directed to prepare and make publicly available a collection of resources for the assistance of addition and mental health support and treatment. That staff be directed to contact the mental health, Canadian Mental Health Association, express interest in hosting a safe beds program in the city of Thorold. That staff be directed to request a following from the regional municipality of Niagara. A, increased delivery of preventive drug education in our community. B, creation of an Indigenous homeless and housing action plan. C, a staff report on the subject of the Indigenous Mobile Crisis Unit and D, hosting of a public summit for mental health, homelessness and addiction. Number five, that staff be directed to request from the province of Ontario, access to alternative revenue streams other than property taxes for the purpose of addressing social housing funding requirements. And six, that the rest, this resolution be circulated to the following with a request for support and call to action of all Niagara region school boards, all Niagara region municipalities, all Niagara region members of par, provincial parliament, all Niagara region members of parliament, the federal minister of Crown Indigenous Relations, the federal minister of Indigenous Services, the federal minister of Mental Health and Addictions, the Ontario Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Ontario Minister of Indigenous Affairs, Ontario Solicitor General and Ontario Minister of Health, and the Canadian Mental Health Association, Brock University and Agri College Fort Erie Native Friendship Center, Ontario Federation of Indigenous Friendship Centers, Niagara Region Regional Native Center, Niagara Peninsula Aboriginal Area Management Board, Niagara Aboriginal Health Center, Niagara Chapter of Native Women and Niagara Region Métis Council. And, Mr. Mayor, the reason I kind of re, got reacquainted with Stephen, um, just recently, uh, we lost one of our former students that went through what was Clancy at the time. And, um, um, a couple of days before Christmas, unfortunately, young lady left, 32-years-old, left three young children and she, uh, it was a fentanyl issue. So it's just close to my heart. It's not the first student I've lost. Um, it, it breaks your heart, um, knowing that this happened. So this is why, um, we're doing this tonight, or trying to do it. Thank you. Thanks, and I hope to get everybody's support. Can I, can I ask for a recorded vote, please, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Counselor Hanley, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, that I'll support the motion. Definitely, you know, uh, I've seen it in my own family and that stuff and throughout, because of so on and so forth, uh, mental health issues as well as drug addiction and homelessness. And, uh, we need to address the issue. You know, it's, it's gone tenfold since COVID. Uh, COVID increased the mental health issue, the homelessness and the addiction tenfold with the handing out of free cash to individuals who, uh, otherwise wouldn't have the accessibility that they did to it and that. And I believe that we need to be part of the solution because the government was a part of the problem, uh, be it federally, provincially or even in the, the region wide. So we need to support this 100% and, and see that we can get some action to help the mental illness, the homelessness and the drug addiction within the Niagara region.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor DeDeVitas.
Through you, sir. I will support this. Um, I never could imagine so many young people that are addicted to drugs and homeless. Uh, this is a crisis happening and we have to do something and so I will support this 100%.
Counselor Decker.
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to say that this is an issue that I don't take lightly. Um, it's very close to me. Um, I would encourage others to get more educated on mental health and addiction. There are really, some really good resources available. I know that Kason and through Pastons and there is an excellent addictions doctor in St. Catherine's, Dr. Shetty, who provides an enormous amount of information, education, uh, to families and anyone that's going through this. So I do recommend that if they do, if you have a family member or a friend or a colleague that needs help, please visit her. I know she's, uh, twice a week on Welland Avenue, St. Catherine's. And she is, um, all I can say about her is that she is an amazing person and will change your life if you go to see her.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hare and then Counselor DeAngelo, do you have your hand? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of points. I'll support this. It's, uh, important, uh, especially today.
Very important. Uh, I just wanted to ask Counselor DeRoe for a little bit of clarity on number two, if I may. Um, that staff be directed to prepare and make publicly available. Um, are you thinking, uh, on the city website? Is that?
Correct, yes, yes. City website.
Communications, communication.
Social communications, yes.
Excellent, excellent. Um, just, uh, with the second line there, for the assistance of addiction. So that should be corrected. Thank you.
Okay, that's good. Okay, Counselor DeAngelo, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be supporting the motion also. Uh, I know pretty well everyone's been affected with family members that have mental health issues. Um, so it's important that they get the resources and seek the help that can help them through that process. Um, I, a couple of items I do really appreciate to hear is getting that information out there. I know, um, in number three, it talks about contacting Canada Mental Health Association. You may want to specifically put Niagara branch there, uh, because there's the Canadian Mental Health Associations and their divot up by branches.
Can we, uh, you're good with that, Counselor DeRoe. So we'll make that, yeah?
The only reason I say that is because I actually work for Canada Mental Health Niagara. Um, so I, I see quite a bit of this that goes on. So that's very, very important. The other component is the, um, a lot of this starts with someone that is homeless, like, uh, and they need to get homes and they need to be affordable. So I do appreciate our last speaker who came here and spoke about the, uh, province being, uh, social housing being uploaded to the province. I, I would rather see the province fund the program appropriately and let Niagara deal with our solutions here in Niagara, Niagara Regional Housing and other opportunities through the region. But if they don't get funded properly, they can't run the programs, they can't get the affordable housing. It, it's always been a struggle. When I served on Niagara Regional Housing or Thorold Now Profit, there just isn't enough funding out there to do what needs to be done. I think this is where the province really needs to step up and help the local, regional areas, uh, but by, by providing some sustainable funding where that can actually happen. The prices of everything is going up, housing's no different, and it makes it very difficult, uh, to get into the market and very difficult when you, um, don't have a large amount of income to, uh, to foster that. So I, I do appreciate the motion, including that and, and the other items. So I'll be supporting this, uh, when we vote on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, uh, we're gonna do a recorded vote as requested and, uh, I'll let the clerk run the recorded vote. Okay?
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so I, just starting with Counselor DeRoe. Yes, for the motion, thank you. Okay, Counselor Longo.
In favor.
Counselor Decker.
Counselor DeDeVitas.
In favor.
Counselor O'Hare.
In favor.
Counselor DeAngelo.
In favor.
Your sentence?
In favor.
Counselor Hanley?
In favor.
And, uh, in favor. So it's unanimous.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to both presenters as well. Uh, we're gonna move on now to, um, 10.2, which is a memorandum, PWCSC 12025, respecting Uppers Lane Extension Program, memorandum of understanding update. We have one written delegation respecting item 11.4 being memorandum, PWCSC 12025, respecting Uppers Lane Extension Project, um, and memorandum, uh, of understanding update. And, uh, David Faletta, planner and partner of Bozfields Incorporated, submitted a, a written delegation. Um, he's the planner and partner from Bozfields and sent on behalf of Rudanco Hospitality Group, has been received. In accordance with the procedure by law, the memorandum will follow. Uh, everybody seen the, uh, the, uh, written delegation? Is, is there anybody that wants to speak to that before I put the motion on the floor? Go ahead, Counselor.
Can I ask questions to the staff now?
No, you, once I put the, uh, report on.
Yep, I'll wait.
Okay, okay. Um, go, we'll go to the report. Okay, PWCSC 2025, Uppers Lane Extension Project Memorandum of Understanding. Can I get a move in a second or for that? I got Counselor Santos and Counselor DeRoe. Um, Jeff Holman, Director of Public Works and Community Services is here to answer any questions and we'll, uh, put it up and now you're free to go ahead there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I got a message for Stafford. Jeff, uh, why was the MOU not
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as, tried to explain it in the, in the memorandum, the, we met numerous times with various parties and the, um, proposal by Rolling Meadows was, uh, abandoned by the proponent, uh, which reduced some of the urgency. Um, and the matter is very fluid, as you see, not just from this correspondence from Rudanco, but also the correspondence we have in closed session. Um, there's a number of things in play that have to be resolved before we can even think about, um, um, you know, finalizing a cost-sharing agreement, uh, to construct the road. So, uh, I guess the real answer is we are unable to get all the parties together to agree, uh, to the extent that they were willing to commit. Um, having said that, uh, we did a lot of good work in that short period of time to confirm the scope of the work and also what the concept or the premise would be for a cost-sharing agreement moving forward.
I got a couple more questions.
Go ahead, Counselor.
It, it is my understanding that we, we asked staff to pair an MOU with all neighboring landowners, so that the design of Upper, Upper Lane would be accommodate everyone's requirements. The MOU offered an opportunity for everyone to participate together in a finalizing a design that is mutually satisfying. If two or three landowners are opting out of, out not to participate, should we not move forward with the finalizing MOU parties that are interested in participating? Like, shouldn't we keep this going?
I think, through you, Mr. Mayor, it was a good question. Um, you know, I think, I think the conversation still can take place. However, um, it wouldn't be the city moving ahead with a capital project to construct the works. I mean, the concern, the, the context in which the MOU was, was drafted was that we didn't, the city, city council didn't want to lose the opportunity to, um, create an opportunity for a new school. And, um, that opportunity still exists. It's just going down a different path.
Yeah. I'm just worried about what kind of signal we'll be sending out to other developers if we abandon this.
Well, I, through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I think, and I tried to, um, articulate it in the last paragraph there, that if the developers are anxious to move ahead, we would not stop it. We would make sure that it would follow the proper process. But there will have to be some sharing of costs, because that's what our local services policy says and our development charges by law. And so there have to be some collaboration and coordination.
Because I know there's a couple of parties who still want to go ahead with this and who was the party that doesn't want to go ahead with this?
I'm sorry?
Who didn't want to go ahead with the MOU?
Well, the urgency, uh, that was brought forward from the original proponent, Rolling Meadows, uh, is not there anymore. Um, they're not, um, and, and Walker Development Community, um, is, uh, currently in the process of, um, seeking approvals for its quarry operation. So a lot of their land use plans are still kind of in limbo, uh, until they secure all their approvals.
And what was Rolling Meadows, uh, why didn't they want to go ahead with it? What was their reason?
At the moment, they're pursuing another application to, um, locate the school on a different road within their property. At the moment, they're pursuing another application to locate the school on a different road within their property.
Okay, I just think it's important, we talked about affordable housing and not shortage of housing. I think we have an obligation to go through with this.
I think that the memorandum, I think that the report states that those, that it's not dead in the water, that this thing here is a fluid project. But don't forget, it was council that wanted this done by the, that came from council to get an agreement by the end of January. Okay, so that was a direction of council which staff followed. And then, but if you read the report, the report's very clear in what Jeff said at the end of the report that, that it's not dead in the water.
Oh, good. I don't want it to be dead in the water.
Go ahead Counselor DeAngelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I concur with what you just said. It's, this, we were trying to get the four parties to work together. But it was now becoming a cost to the city to do that when the four parties should have been working together without the city. So we were just trying to move this along because we had a school that we wanted to be built. And that was the reason why we were trying to get everyone into the same room. But now that's, that's not urgent. This still needs to move forward, but it shouldn't be driven by the, the, the city. It should be driven by the four, four landowners that need to work on that. And then the city participates once they're starting to mesh together. Right now, they're not all on the same page. And until they get all on the same page, I don't think we should be spending staff time and resources on this when we have other projects that need to be done. It wasn't going to be built next year, like, very imminently. So I think by putting a pause on this and leaving the window open, I think that's the appropriate tact that staff should be doing with this. So I appreciate that this memorandum's coming forward at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I got Counselor Hanley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personally, I, you know, was echoing what Counselor DeAngelo just said. I think we need to, I had put a motion forward back in February that we end any part of solicitation, end of this. And seize spending taxpayers' dollars on a road to nowhere. Mr. Gordon has explained to me significantly that he doesn't see anything happening in that area to five to seven years. He has no interest dealing with the other two parties reaping, upgrading Uppers Lane at this time. I know Walker Brothers Quarry is basically in the same predicament and that stuff. It's not part of their short-term plans at the moment. And there's a new school being built on Brighton Lane in Confederation Heights. And to me, we're only pausing it, but how long for? Because I could tell you, talking to Mr. Gordon personally, he told me he has no interest in negotiating a memorandum of understanding. And when asking him when the future looks for that area of Thorold, he said not for five to seven years minimum. So we're beating a dead horse. I think we need to move on and get the city's end of it, out of it, like Counselor DeAngelo says. We spent enough money on it. It's going nowhere. And I mentioned that months ago, it would go nowhere. I tried to put a motion forward in February, if you remember. I rescinded the motion so that we would allow this to continue till now. So, you know, if I need to, I'm going to re, put my motion back on the floor that we end any type of financial responsibilities from the city of Thorold effective immediately. We don't need to be in the ballgame no more.
Thank you Counselor. Anyone else here? Go ahead Counselor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with what the last two counselors said. We did this purposely. We drew a line in the sand. We told the developers if they wanted to move ahead to come to a resolution. I almost feel like we're reconsidering this for the fifth time. This is how many times we've spoken about it. And I don't know if we should be going down this path. So I'll stop talking.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Sentence, you've already spoken. You know, wait till everyone else gets a chance to speak.
Yeah, just, just to reiterate, Mr. Mayor, I agree with this memorandum. We're beating our heads against the table. We've been through this. We've tried. As a city, we tried. And I think we just got to move on and hopefully they come up with something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead Counselor.
I just think we spent money on this and if two parties want to go forward with this, and January first, I don't think was a good, a good enough time for them all to come together. I think they never had enough time. And we spent some money on it. The city spent money on it. There's two parties who want to go forward with it. And I think we should go forward with it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hanley, did you want the last word?
Yes, I just wanted to let it be known that one of the issues here is that there needs to be a cost sharing agreement signed between Parkbridge and Rudanco and Rolling Meadows Planet Subdivision. Because the servicing would be coming from the Rolling Meadows end of the property. And at this time, they're, they're at a standstill with any type of agreement coming between Parkbridge and Rudanco and Rolling Meadows Planet Subdivision in regards to a cost sharing agreement. And that's what's holding this back. So until there's a cost sharing agreement, that project's never going to go forward. And the servicing to get out there is never going to get there. So we're beating a dead horse continuously and it's time to get off the horse and let's move on.
Okay, so we get a mover and a seconder, correct?
We do.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we got a mover and a seconder for this motion. And as you can see, this is for, receiving this for information purposes. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, items for consent. We have items eleven one through eleven three and eleven five. Is there anyone that wants to speak to any of these or are we taking them as a block? I don't see anybody. So I got eleven one to eleven five. Can I get a move?
Sorry, eleven one to eleven three.
Eleven one to eleven three and eleven five. Go ahead Counselor DeRo. Okay. Eleven one to eleven three. Can I get a mover and a seconder? I got Counselor Decker and Counselor DeDeVitas. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And we'll keep the same mover and seconder for eleven five, but Counselor DeRose wants to speak to it. So go ahead Counselor DeRose.
Yeah, I just, I'm a little bit concerned about, last time you had something like this, when they start talking about the fee schedule. I, I had a lifelong Thorold resident. I don't see, the last time something like this came forward from a previous employer, they were.
Really wake up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. The thing that concerns me is that they're, Thorold residents were asked to, to pay more than an increase in out-of-town residents. And here's the thing. Every Thorold resident contributes to the maintenance and our cemetery through our taxes. Now, I think that should be respected when they're coming up with a new fee schedule. For the reason that all, we've already paid a lot of money for this. If you think about families that have been in Thorold fifty, sixty, seventy years, that's, that's a lot of history. That that family has provided to, we have a beautiful cemetery and that's what we, and that's from people's, not only their hard work, but their, their taxes, their property taxes. So I'm just, I just wanted to.
I think that that's going to be addressed by the last mark to address.
That's what I wanted to address right now is that.
No, no, it's a good question.
When you're doing it, please keep in mind that it's not fair to raise the prices for Thorold residents. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Mark, did, did you want to comment at all? I know that that's all being taken into consideration with this. Am I correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You're absolutely correct. Many of the updates that are being done to the fee schedule are essentially being done because of legislation. But you're absolutely right. There were some errors in the previous fee schedules. Typically, or historically, non-residents would pay a higher fee and that will be the case on this new fee schedule.
Thank you. Counselor DeRose, does that address?
We'll be approving that, obviously, or voting on it.
That report would come to council, okay?
And last thing. The review would examine options for the future burial, cremation, gardens and trails.
Sorry. The review would examine, it's highlighted on the second page of the report, options for future burial, cremation, gardens and trails. Who is going to formulate this review and what is it going to entail? That's my question. Thank you.
And I'll let Mark answer then.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So the survey will be developed, taking a look at, I guess, changes within the bereavement sector over the last decade or so. Where we're seeing an increase in interest in cremation options. Families are wishing to scatter their loved ones or plant a memorial tree and scatter their loved one around that memorial tree. There are conversations with respect to green burials. There are conversations with respect to memorialization options. So the survey will encapsulate all of these different options that we have been privy to that are happening across Ontario and right here within the region as well. Asking the public essentially what their interest is and if we should be pursuing these options here in Thorold.
And those options will come to council at the, at the end of the day, Counselor.
Absolutely.
It will be council that will ultimately pass whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead Counselor DeAngelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just regarding the fee schedules that were, this report was talking about. Will this also include the new mausoleum that's being built, through you, Mr. Mayor?
Mark, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the new fee schedule will include the, the proposed fees for the new niches and the new crypts in the mausoleum. Again, and again, we've taken a look at the business model considering the proposed cost of that mausoleum. And we've based the cost of the niches and crypts on those, on that cost.
Okay, now that's excellent. And again, factoring if you've lived in Thorold or if you haven't, I assume that'd be part of the process. And then just the other one, I just want to make sure, because I know we had some discussion before, the option of future burial, cremation, gardens and trails. Now, these trails would be specifically, not multi-purpose trails. I don't, I feel I don't want to see multi-purpose trails in our cemetery. I want to see trails or gardens that are respective to the people that are buried there. So that's for me, no question there, just, that's something I'd be very concerned about. And I know members of the public have approached me regarding that, so they'd be very concerned about that. Because again, it's a very, to be a very respectful place. And I think what gets incorporated in there has to fit with a cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead Counselor DeDeVitas.
I'm just going to say what Counselor DeAngelo also said. When I read this, the gardens, and as soon as trails popped up, I was wondering why trails? I don't know. We were spending money on this, taxpayers' money. I'm not sure if any people, citizens in Thorold want to spend any money, staff time on trails. It's sacred ground. I see, looking into options, but I don't think citizens want staff to spend time on trails. And I just want to make sure we always remember sacred ground.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. We had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, we're going to move into items for consideration. Item twelve point one is the C L K C three twenty twenty five, Thorold Skating Club request. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that? I got Counselor DeRose and Counselor DeAngelo. And staff's here to answer any questions regarding that. You see the request and you see where it will be funded through. Is there anyone that wants to speak to that? Because, go ahead Counselor DeRose.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. We've done it before. I'm very frugal, but when something like this comes up, I think it's great support to one of our community members that offers a lot of recreation to our youth. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead Counselor DeAngelo.
Just same comment. I have no problem supporting this. It's a great event. It's been going on for a long, long time. It's been part of our community and any support we can give it, because I know as time moves along here, everything's getting more expensive for everyone to do things. It supports one of our youth groups in our community. So again, hundred percent behind this and I know they'll have another successful show.
Yeah, and, and the group's working hard to rebuild the club and get the numbers back up since COVID, so, and they're doing a good job. Oh, is there anyone else? Go ahead Counselor Longo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just through you to the Director of Finance, is there money available in community grants for this? And is it eligible?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it is eligible. Unfortunately, I haven't seen the requests that have come in from the other groups. I believe we're meeting this week to review them. So there is community grant money, but whether it's sufficient or not to cover all of the amounts, that remains to be seen.
Okay, Counselor Longo, I know that's, that's not the answer you want.
Again, the Director of Finance always wants to understand where money's coming from to pay for these, so.
Jacob's here. And Jacob, can you shine some light on that? I have no idea because we haven't seen anything regarding community grants.
Yeah, I just want, I just want to be comfortable that there's going to be enough money in community grants for this.
Are you confident, Jacob? We're putting you on the spot here.
No worries. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. As a pickle, community grants does get oversubscribed. We always get requests for more funding than is typically available in the community grants program. But seeing the six hundred dollars, I do think that it would be able to be fit in appropriately to that.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Jacob. Go ahead Counselor Decker.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The reason why this was coming up tonight is because it's happening before the actual grant budgets coming out. So that's why they had asked us to present it tonight, so.
No, no, because of the timing, time sensitive.
Yeah, it was time sensitive. Thank you.
Go ahead Counselor Sentence.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great group. Been doing this for a very long time. I have no problem supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead Counselor DeDeVitas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, lots of history here. It's fantastic to see them out, out, back there again. Any way to promote exercise in the community, I'll always support. And this is great.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara, did you have your hand up? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. I will support this as well. I don't think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the Thorold Skating Center has asked for money before. And it's nice to share some of the money throughout the community. So I strongly would vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Update respecting planning fees, twelve point two D S six twenty twenty five. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that report? Counselor Sentence and Counselor DeRose. And Jay, the report's up and Jason's here to answer any questions. And Morgan's here as well. We'll put you both on the hot seat. Go ahead Counselor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the appropriate staff member. I'm just looking, and I'm not opposed to these increases because that's obviously what the, the environment is out there for this. But I just want to understand this. So these fees help to fund our planning and building department, correct? This, this isn't a profitable section. We use all the money here to fund that department.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Longo. These fees are to, in an attempt to become cost recovery or have our services only within the planning division. It's not associated with the building division, but only the planning division in order to be recuperated the actual costs incurred. It's not a profit-making mechanism, no.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to get at. So through you, Mr. Mayor, my question is, have we been recouping our costs as my understanding was over the years? I thought that was kind of mandated.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In the building division, we have been recouping operating costs. But in the planning division, we have been severely underfunded over the years. And this is an attempt to try to rectify that. Unfortunately, the last review hadn't been done since two thousand and fifteen. And so it is a significant increase at this moment in time, given that the length of time it's been since the last review. But we're hoping to monitor it more regularly moving forward.
Okay, thank you for that answer. So I guess my final question here would be, would this increase in fees help stabilize our planning department? Staff, staffing.
Good question, Counselor.
Is that the goal?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So these fees are simply to try to help fund our expenses within the planning division. It is not making any adjustments to compensation, staffing levels or anything along those lines. So it will not have an, these fee adjustments will not have an impact on the workload on staff. It's simply going to reduce the burden on the taxpayers and move the majority of the direct and indirect costs. the direct and indirect costs of the planning division on development applications to the actual developer versus the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you for that, I said that was my last question, but I do have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
So, for example, here, zoning bylaw amendment, our current fee is $7,410, it is going to go up to $26,746, that's quite an increase. So what do you anticipate this new fee structure will mean to the planning department in terms of a dollar amount in the fiscal year? Do you have an idea what that would be? There's gotta be 50 different items here that.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, no, we, it is all dependent on what applications we actually receive. So we are unable to predict what applications a developer may bring forward in the future, so it is possible that the actual expenses of the planning division may still fall on the taxpayers, should no development come forward, or minimal development come forward, but when development applications do come forward, the intention is for that cost to be incurred by the developer rather than the taxpayer when the opportunity arises.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Sense.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor, through you, I was hoping the staffing question from councillor Longo was gonna be a different answer. We know our struggles, I was hoping that would help us with our staffing, but we'll have to address that another way. So my question would be, as far as in the region, are these prices standard, or where do we lie with everyone else in this? Or do you know?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor, through this analysis, we did compare to several municipalities, and throughout that evaluation, I found that the fee structure varies quite significantly throughout local municipalities. So we're, with this new fee structure, we will be closer to the top end, not the most expensive necessarily, but closer to the top end, at the same time, keeping in mind that we're seeing some of the most developments of all the municipalities. So there are certainly municipalities within the Niagara region that have significantly lower fees than what we're proposing here, similar to, well, not as low as our current fees are, but I anticipate that you'll, we'll see those fees adjusted in local municipalities as well in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor DeRose, and then I'll go to councillor DeAngelo.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Jason, very detailed report, I like it. The only thing I wanted to ask you, councillor Longo brought up about zoning bylaw amendment, 7,400 to 26,000. Now, recently, I reached out in regard to someone that needed to change their property, was gonna request the change, is that just for one property, the 26,000, or is that for a subdivision, or a group of homes?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it would be based on application, so one application may encompass more than one property, it depends on the situation, but potentially, if you are looking to amend the zoning bylaw for only one property, then yes, this would be to only the one, it's per application, it's not based on per property.
So, so.
That is correct.
What if they started contact with you already? But still hold on yet.
Sorry, what if they had started the process previously to this being enacted? Would you be able to go by the old schedule?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so the proposal before council, the recommendation, and should council approve these recommended fee adjustments, a subsequent bylaw amendment will have to come at a later meeting to council for, to actually implement these, but one of the recommendations is, in the report, is to postpone the enactment of the new fees until May 1st, in order for us to give notice, ample notice to the development community of the adjustments. And should we receive a complete application, I want to stress, complete application, prior to May 1st, should May 1st be the date the council agrees to, then the applicant would be subject to the current fees versus the new fees. The fee is applicable at the time of complete application being submitted.
Jason, like, the one in question, I'm talking, it's an existing older home, so would that still be that 7,000 to change the zoning?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if it's a zoning bylaw amendment that they are needing, then yes, the current fee is 7,410.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor DeAngelo, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, my question was on the pre-consultation, it went from 0 to 6,000, is that, and I know the question was asked, are these fees standard throughout the region? Is that something that other municipalities charge as the pre-consultation fee?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, some municipalities charge fees, some don't, like, as I mentioned earlier, there is a wide range of what people charge, what municipalities charge out there. The $6,062 proposed fee is a fee to recover costs, there is a significant amount of time put into pre-consultation meetings by staff. One of the proposals in the report, however, is that, yes, the, there would be a pre-consultation fee, but the legislation has changed where the municipality can no longer mandate a pre-consultation meeting. And so, knowing that, we want to encourage pre-consultation meetings so that applicants are coming with complete applications, they're well-informed in advance, and it's not delaying the process when they want to hit the ground. But given that it's not mandated anymore, we can't make it mandatory, the proposal in the report is that we would deduct that pre-consultation fee when an actual application comes in, we would deduct that off of the application fee. So that basically renders the pre-consultation as a free service, should we actually receive an application. We do receive a lot of requests for pre-consultation that never come to fruition, and there's a significant amount of staff time put into those, so this would at least cover the cost of staff's time on those type of situations.
That's pretty scary, I think you're reading my mind, that was my next question. So I really appreciate that, because that's where I wanted to go with this, if someone comes with an application and they move forward, they get a discount, so that's what you're saying, and if they come here and waste their, waste time, because they're just exploring stuff, and they're using staff time up where it could be utilized elsewhere, so that was a great answer, I really appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions? Go ahead councillor DeDavie.
Question, Jason, were our fees the lowest of all the municipalities before? How bad was it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have the, all the numbers in front of me at the moment, we weren't the lowest, but we were pretty close.
Okay, because we need to start getting up there in a lot of these categories, yeah. Okay, perfect.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead councillor Hanley.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I just have one comment in regards to the fees, one of the fees, cash in lieu of parking agreement, $2,630, that's one that should be up there like $20,000, because often we come here, and one of the biggest concerns that council has is that we accept this cash in lieu, so that a guy who's building a subdivision or apartment building doesn't have to get the allotted amount of parking spaces in his property, so he comes and he gives the city 2,630, and we say, okay, you don't need one and a half parking spots per space, or one and a quarter parking spots per space, so when that comes back, that's a fee that I believe should be a substantial amount, so it hinders developers from wanting to come here, and downsizing their developments, and having the appropriate parking spaces needed for these developments to occur, because one, like I said, the outstanding issue is every time a development comes here, the biggest concern at council is parking. We need to make it harder for parking in lieu, not easier.
Thank you.
My only comment.
Jason, did you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, in response to that comment or question, the fee that council sees before them tonight for the cash in lieu parking agreement is not the securities that they would have to pay in lieu of providing parking, this is just the application fee to request such, so they would have to pay the securities on top of that. I understand councillor Hanley's comments, and parking is a sensitive issue in Thorold, the legislation only allows us to recover actual costs on application, so we wouldn't be able to inflate an application fee based on political desire, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you very much for that, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Go ahead councillor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a comment, thank you for this, Jason. I think it's some great work, and I just want to say that, you know, looking at your rationale, point number three, this is what it's all about, improving efficiency and services improvement, this is gonna make the planning department stronger and healthier as well, though developers will have to pay slightly more money in their developments, they will get an increase in their efficiency and service, and I think that's paramount to developers, time is so important, if things move quicker along for them, they'll be much happier. So thank you for this, and I'm sure you'll get some great feedback.
Councillor DeAngelo.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, the only question I had is, I know there's a lot of fees, and they've gone up quite a bit, are any of them, is council able to waive any of these if they are for affordable or attainable housing? Is that something that it will be built into the bylaw that'll allow us to do something like that? As we talk always about affordable housing, this is gonna drive housing prices higher, so.
That's a good question, I know that on development charges, that's addressed, is that, would that be addressed on these charges?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the proposals before council tonight do not have recommendations pertaining to putting some language specifically in the fee bylaw regarding affordable housing, however, I will remind council that this is council's bylaw. So at any point in time, like any of council's bylaws, should council have a desire to waive a fee upon a specific request, they have the authority to do so.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to see some sort of language in there that allows for some opportunity to do that, as opposed to just throw it at council, okay, you can waive today's fee because I like the developer, tomorrow I don't like the developer, he pays. I think it has to be specific, and we can move forward with this, and if that has to be developed a little later, I don't mind that, because I think it has to really be given some thought, so that it, it will increase the propensity to build affordable housing, or look at that a little bit more, because every time a developer comes here, one of the other questions we ask him, how much of this development is gonna be affordable housing? And if we're charging them high fees for that, he's gonna say, none, because I don't want it, because I'm not gonna make any money out of it, so, so we have to help them out in an essence to get some of that affordable housing, so I would, you know, I'm ready to move forward with what's here, but I'd like to see some wording come back, maybe when the bylaws is coming back, that we have something in there.
Can staff work on that, Jason?
You can have that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, go ahead councillor DeRose.
I don't mind that, I just, I want to make sure that they're legally locked in, if they say they're gonna do affordable housing, they can't change midstream, because I could see that happening, just to circumvent the new fees. I understand what councillor DeAngelo's saying, it's gonna push the prices up, but if you think about it, the last 10 years, taxpayers have paid for it, and there's no benefit to them to pay for someone else's house, that's my opinion, thank you.
So, we've got this on the floor, we had a mover and a seconder, and it's, I just want to make this clear, this is the update respecting planning fees DS6 2025, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay.
I just want to be clear, so that's gonna be captured in number two, the point I brought up?
Yes.
Okay, just didn't know if you needed that separate, but, thank you.
12.3 is the fire master plan update, Fire Station 3, FES2 2025, can I get a mover and a seconder, councillor Decker and councillor O'Hare? And motions on the floor, and Chief Dixon's here to answer any questions. So I'll open the floor up, go ahead councillor DeRose.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Chief Dixon, just, were the local residents of Fire Station 3, did they have any input, or was there a public forum? Because I don't remember, that's why I'm asking.
No, there was not, through you, Mr. Mayor, sir, no, there was not.
Have you received, through the mayor, have you received any feedback?
Through you, Mayor, no, I have received no feedback, no.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Sense.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, through you to Chief Dixon, or maybe this is to finance, if we go ahead and do this, I hate doing it, I mean, we've got COVID hit us, the flood hit us, staffing and recruiting, it's just not there anymore, but if we do do this, are we able to, and I know you and I talked about this, Mr. Mayor, are we able to allocate whatever we do with that building, whatever funds come from that building, can we allocate it to make sure it stays in port, that it stays with the Darlene Ryan, or the park, or, or anything like that?
Through you, Ms. Mayor, yes, council would have.
Okay, I think that's where we should go with this, if.
So basically, though, let's be clear.
I know.
The motion tonight is just to, to, to close Fire Station 3 efficiently, but it's got nothing to do with the disposition of the.
Just wanted to get that out there, that's.
But I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to speak to this? Go ahead councillor DeRose.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, just to Chief Dixon again, obviously, it was recommended in a fire master plan, are you in agreement with this?
Through you, Mayor, to councillor DeRose, it's never easy having to close a fire station, obviously, I've been through that once already, however, with the statistics that we have and the analytics that we've been able to do over the last five or six years, yes, I can.
Thank you.
Okay, we had a mover and a seconder, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, FES3 2025, updated fees for fire and emergency services, can I get a mover and a seconder for this report? I've got councillor Sense and councillor O'Hare. Again, the report's on the screen, and Chief Dixon's here to answer any questions. We're putting them on the hot seat tonight. Any questions for Chief Dixon? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Fire prevention staffing, can I get a mover and a seconder for this report that's gonna be on the floor? I got councillor Decker and councillor DeAngelo. And again, Chief Dixon's here to answer any questions, I think the report's pretty clear, but he's here, if you have any questions regarding that. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. PWCS 13 2025, RFP award, Rolling Meadows Turf Field, can I get a mover and a seconder for that report? I got councillor DeRose and councillor DeAngelo, and that report's up on the, and Jeff's here, as well as Sean, Sean's at the mic, he's hot, he's ready to go. Is there any questions, or anything? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Stay there, though, I might have some further questions later for you, I'm just kidding. I don't know how you get off so easy. PWCS, City of Thorold's 50th Anniversary celebrations, can I get a mover and a seconder for this? I've got councillor Decker and councillor O'Hare, and Jacob's here, I see that, to answer any questions tonight on this regards, is there any questions? Go ahead councillor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Jacob, push the green button. Jacob, I sit on the committee, the working group, with councillor Decker and councillor DeDavides, and we've been discussing this to some extent, and recently, I've been made aware that we're also celebrating two other very important events. So this is our 50th year since the amalgamation, not the amalgamation, the. So, this is our 50th year since the amalgamation, not the amalgamation, the incorporation of the City of Thorold. In 1875, it was incorporated as a town, and prior to that, in 1850, it was a village. So, in effect, we're celebrating 175, 150, and 50. So, I, my question to you is, is this something that we should be looking at a little bit more closely and tying in with our celebratory year?
Thank you for the question.
Yep, thank you for the question. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do have three major milestones happening this year. As the report stands, I think we can adapt kind of the proposed things in the report to make sure we're encompassing all three of these milestones within our, sorry, all three of these milestones within our celebrations, but I do think, yeah, we can go forward with kind of the celebrations as proposed in this report, and shift and pivot a little bit just to make sure we're encapsulating the other milestones as well.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to talk about money again. We just had our budget, and why wasn't this brought up during our budget deliberations, where we, if we knew this was coming up, and we knew there was going to be money required for this, like, now we're going to have a general budget overrun? And, you know, we didn't want to pass the tax increase we had, because it was on the large side for the first time in a number of years, and now we're just now adding, you know, a little bit here and there. So, I just want to know why this wasn't put in the budget.
Jacob, can you answer that?
Yep. Yeah, thank you for the question. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Originally, one budget was being put together this year. I was asked not to ask for any increases for anything in the budget. So, basically, originally, the plan was to go with Canada Day and incorporate some of the celebrations into the Canada Day budget. Recently, two months ago, we sat down with the Special Events Working Group and some staff internally, and I was asked to develop a bit of a framework for a bit of a larger-scale celebration. So, this is kind of really ballooning a little bit on what was originally planned, just to acknowledge these celebrations in a bit of a larger way, that also extend the acknowledgement of the celebrations throughout the calendar year, rather than just limiting it to our Canada Day celebrations, as had initially been proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'll just make a comment. You know, I, I'm not going to support this, not because, obviously, they're important milestones, but I think we need to figure out a way to get this done in the budget that we have in place for the Canada Day celebrations. So, again, just a general budget overrun, I'm not happy with. So, I just want to go on record, I won't support this.
I think, though, and I, I'm not arguing whether you support it or not support it, but I think he said the money was already in the budget for Canada Day. It's expanding it beyond Canada Day. Am I correct, Jacob, is what you're saying? That's where the money's required?
Yes, that's correct. So, looking to do some other printing, some other assets available.
Okay. Do you want to comment any further? Counselor DeAngelo.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I sort of agree with Counselor Longo here, because the Canada Day budget went up by about $15,000, $20,000. So, I think this should have been included in there, but nevertheless, we're here. We're going to move forward with this. I will support this, because I think it's important to support anniversary dates, and I know Jacob's going to do a fine job with the $7,500, and he's going to probably find a sponsor out there to help offset some of this, right? So, that's what I'm hoping for. But I, and I have a question for our Director of Finance. Do we have tracking of budget overruns at a specific time? Because if not, I have a...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do, and we do present that to council quarterly.
Okay. Can we change that, so that every time there's a budget overrun, we have an appendix attached to that report, so we see what budget overruns have occurred prior to the new budget overrun that's going to be added to it, along with the quarterly one? I don't want to make extra work for our Director of Finance, but I think it's important, when we establish a budget, and then move forward, and then keep adding stuff on there. I think we need to know what we've been adding on there, and why, so we can either defend it to the taxpayers, saying this is the reasons why we have these budget overruns, and that's what we're trying to accomplish. Because I don't want to give them the impression, well, we just passed this budget, who cares? Let's just add more stuff on to it. Because really, you know, we can make this number a lot higher, in terms of, you know, keeping the budget number down, and then just adding budget overruns throughout the whole year. So, I don't want to be here playing games, so I'd rather have some open and transparency regarding this. So, if that can be accomplished as an appendix, every time a budget overrun report comes, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sure, we update it after every council meeting, so that's not a problem at all.
Yeah, and there's also reverses, where we had savings as well, am I correct? Where we don't use the full budget, and it goes back in reserves.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, but normally, that's not known until the end of the year.
I know. But it did show positive, that's all I'm saying. Anyways.
Just to continue that factor, if there is a budget realignment, that could show up on that sheet, too, where you're taking money from one place to another throughout the year, if you know that's not going to happen. I would like to see that also, because that could offset some of the potential budget overruns, because we're only into the month of February, so we have another 10 months, and there's going to be more budget overruns. Thanks.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor DeDeVitas.
Through you, Ms. Mayor. I will support this 100%, because we never really brought, thought about it. We were always thinking about, no, no, we've already saved money, we've got to save money. Then, as a group, we thought, this is a major milestone. We can't think money at this point in time. 150 years. So, village, town, city. So, we've got to stop our way of thinking sometimes, when there's a big milestone. Thorold has a lot to be proud of, and we've got to start tooting our horn. So, when I was at a committee, I am encouraged to do this, and they said, we already went to budget. And I go, who cares? This is a big deal, and let's treat it like a big deal. I know you just can't start adding for budgets, and I'm not for that, but this is a special moment that we have to recognize. So, we were sitting on our hands, I'm glad we got off our hands, and we did this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hanley, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm also, you know, I'm going to support it, too. You know, we have to remember, Counselor O'Hare made some great points, but some great milestones. Actually, the Thorold was first settled 245 years ago, in 1780. And also, we have another historical event happen this year. I believe it's the 100th anniversary this year of Station Number Two Volunteer Fire Company. So, you know, we've got a lot to celebrate this year. It just happens all coincide with 2025, with the 1850 village, the 1875 town, as Counselor O'Hare said. 245 years ago, City of Thorold was first settled, Thorol Volunteer Firefighter Station Number Two, 100-year anniversary. So, I'm for the $7,500. We need to promote the city, and it's for a great endeavor.
Thank you. Okay. We had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Notice this motion. I have two here. Counselor sentence.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, notice a motion regarding the McAdam Park.
Okay. Counselor Hanley? Go ahead, Counselor Hanley.
Yes, a notice of motion in regards to last meeting that I brought up, in regards to the zoning amendment to the bylaw. I was late getting it in, so I'm going to be doing it in the next meeting. Also, I'm putting a notice of motion in regards to development fee charges. To, for a specific property. My notice of motion for February that I was to have forward today was in regards to dog kennels, and them not being recognized in any of the official zoning amendments that was done in 2019. And I'm going to piggyback on that in regards to development fees that they're wanting to charge the kennel in Thorold for addition to their property, seeing that they're not zoned anywhere, and the city is asking for $86,000 in development fees, because they say they're zoned commercially, but yet we don't recognize kennels in the City of Thorold, so how can they be zoned commercially?
Okay, so you're going to work with the clerk on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to bring a motion forward. This is a notice of motion regarding the flying of the American flag. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we've got motions, and we have a number of motions tonight. We'll start with 14.1, procedural bylaw amendment respecting electronic participation in regular council meetings. And I'll call on Counselor Longo for his motion, and do you have a seconder, Counselor?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Counselor O'Hare.
Okay.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor O'Hare. Whereas a municipal act, RSO 1990, SO 2021, C25 as amended, requires municipalities in Ontario to establish a procedural bylaw to govern the calling, place, and proceedings of meetings. Whereas in 2020, and in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the municipal act was amended to allow municipalities to amend their procedural bylaw to permit electronic participation by members of council in council meetings. Whereas it is recognized that in-person attendance by members of council at regular council meetings, which are scheduled with notice to members of council and the public prior to December 1st in the preceding year, fosters better communication, collaboration, and decision-making among council members, and enhances transparency and accountability to the public. Whereas it is recognized that electronic participation can facilitate the full participation of members who are unable to attend in person under specific circumstances. Whereas the Council of the Corporation of the City of Thorold wishes to amend its procedural bylaw to permit electronic participation by members of council in regular council meetings under specific circumstances, ensuring continued effective governance and the inclusion of all council members in the decision-making process. Therefore, be it resolved that the Corporation of the City of Thorold acts as follows: that staff be directed to amend bylaw 26 2021, being the City of Thorold's procedural bylaw as amended, to require in-person attendance of council members in accordance to participate and count towards quorum for regular meetings of council, with electronic participation in regular meetings of council permitted for counselors with advanced notice provided due to disability, illness, work obligations outside the municipality, inclement weather, or the need to care for a sick family member. And if I could just make a comment, Mr. Mayor, and then I'll let my fellow counselors speak, if anybody wants to. I just want to say, this isn't intended to be a punitive action to any single counselor, to any elected member of this council, nor to question the work that any counselor does for our community. What this motion is about is simply making our regular scheduled council meetings more productive, professional, and efficient. All things that our community deserves. This is not about us, it's about the people we serve. COVID-19 led to the introduction of remote meetings. Now, remote meetings have become a convenience, but that convenience comes with a cost, and I think we can do better. So, those are just my comments on it, Mr. Mayor, and I'd be happy to answer any questions of any questions or comments my fellow counselors have.
And now, I'll open the floor up, and I got Counselor Deroz.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Could I just ask a question, the staff? Are there, presently, do we have any city, through you, Mr. Mayor, do we have any city workers right now that are allowed to work from home or away from the office? Anybody answer?
So, yeah, council has approved a work-from-home policy. Currently, we have about 158 staff members that we have. 10 of them work from home, either one or two days. And that practice is followed through all the other municipal, area municipalities and the region.
And the region, okay. And my only concern about changing this at this point is, they're calling, they're always saying there's going to be another pandemic, just around the corner. There's this, there's bird flu, there's this. So, then, my concern is, then we're going to have to do an about-face and change it back to what it is now. I've utilized it. I've been sick, I've had surgery. I know other members of council have had surgery. I don't know, I have a hard time supporting this at this point, but I'd like to hear other people speak on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think the motion addresses what you just brought up, though, sickness and that. Go ahead, Counselor Hanley. Did you have your hand up, Counselor Hanley?
Yeah, I did, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. You know, I do believe it's directed toward a specific counselor. I hate to say that, because I'm the only one that seem to be practicing the electronic meetings. But before I make a comment, I just have one question for those counselors that are considering supporting the Counselor Longo's motion, but what is it yourselves have accomplished in the last three months that I haven't, in my absence from attending meetings in person? Municipal counselors have many responsibilities, including representing the public, developing policies, and ensuring the municipality's financial stability. Representing the public, respond to public's concerns and investigate them, communicate council decisions to the public, be aware of local issues and problems, work with local businesses, interest groups, and organizations, represent the public's view at council meetings, ensure that if the administration policy is in place, implement council positions, ensure that municipal operations are accountable and transparent, and be accountable to the local community for the council performance, all of which has been done while I haven't been present personally at council meetings. My role as a counselor, as per the municipal act, is that I have three main roles to play, or any counselor for that matter, and it's a representative, a policymaker, and a steward. And I believe that these roles may often overlap, and you may be called on to consider and make decisions on issues like this that sometimes might be complex and controversial. And many of the decisions that we make have long-term consequences for the municipalities, and they should be made in the context of your municipality or the municipality's plans for long-term health and welfare of the community. In the municipal act of 2001, procedural bylaw, electronic participation, the definition 238 subsection 3.1, the applicable procedure bylaw may provide that a member of council of a local board, or of a committee of either of them, can participate electronically in a meeting to the extent and in the manner set out in the bylaw. And elected municipal counselors, you know, I, it's, this is going to lead up into the sick part about it, but we're not employees of the city, as noted in the Labor and Employment Board decision in 2024. Counselors don't meet the definition of employee if they do not pay employment insurance premiums and do not earn hourly wages, but the same amount each month. Furthermore, the Governments Act prohibits a member of council from being employed by the local government. Therefore, under the Employment Standards Act, I'm not an employee of the city, or anybody, but an employee of the people. Therefore, legally, if I state I'm doing it for medical reasons, this cannot be questioned, and legally, I would not be obligated to divulge any medical documentation to substantiate such, for it would be legally defined as an invasion of one's privacy. Furthermore, the Corporation of the City of Thorold bylaw number 26 2021 is a bylaw to govern the calling, place, and proceeding of council meetings. Furthermore, section 6.0, electronic meetings, subsection 6.1 states, a regular council meeting, or special meeting with council may be conducted electronically. Furthermore, requirement of the municipal act to attendance by a counselor. A 2020 amendment to the municipal act enabled municipalities to amend their procedural bylaw to allow members to participate in open and closed meetings electronically, and be counted for the purpose of quorum, and these provisions are optional. And municipalities can choose whether they wish to use these provisions, incorporate them, as the City of Thorold did in 2021, when they passed bylaw number 26-2021. Me personally, I don't believe it fosters better communication, or one would have to ask, how does it foster better cooperation and decision-making? Because before Tuesday's meetings, I've already made my mind up 90% of the time, and half the counselors don't talk to me anyways. It enhances transparency. How? I, for one, have always been transparent. I've always been open, be it I be at a council meeting in person, or I be at a council meeting electronically. Accountability is talked about in this motion. But I believe that's not council to decide if one counselor is accountable, or if another, that's up to the taxpayer. And if they feel a person isn't accountable, they can vote them out. Lastly, as a counselor, we should be more concerned about what we are doing as counselors for our community, and not wasting time on issues as this, I believe, are more concerned about what specific counselors are doing. That's exactly what is happening here, Mayor. It is about a specific individual, because I'm the only counselor that has been, in fact, practicing it in our community. And consider the fact that we allow workers in Thorold a hybrid model for employment, which is done electronically from home, but yet you're going to stop a counselor from doing so unless he has a reason. And also, consider staff have raised no concerns with me attending meetings electronically. And lastly, also consider, the presenter tonight, from the public forum meeting tonight, they did it electronically, and did not have to give a reason why they could not attend in person. And after everybody's talked, I wish to make a second statement, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Counselor DeDeVitas.
Through you, Ms. Mayor. When will this take effect, if they, we agree to this?
I'll let the clerk answer that.
So, similar to Mr. Simpson's motion about planning fees, the amending bylaw will be brought forward at a future date.
So, this will happen this year?
This is just to direct staff to bring the amending bylaw for council's consideration.
Okay. That's why I won't support it. He ran, and he, this should be known to a counselor before they get elected. If we're going to imply this, this bylaw, it should be on the next term. If we're going to imply this, this bylaw, it should be on the next term. He ran, he didn't know this, he just can't throw it at a counselor. By the way, we're changing the rules now, halfway through. And he has a point, too, a lot of staff works from home. But I don't want to see that being something that we go after staff, because it's so hard to get staff, and it's so expensive to get good people. And this is what you're throwing incentive to, is maybe you can work from home. Maybe counselors, it's hard to get great counselors, too. And this is an incentive for them. But I don't mind if we bring this, but not in this term, because it's not fair, because he didn't know that. Then he should bring it the next term. And some people in this room hate Jim, and I don't, I don't roll that way.
Well, I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a common, a fair comment.
Okay, I take that back. Whether you hate him or it doesn't, what you feel about, whatever you feel about the person.
Counsel Dedevis, I wouldn't use that language.
I'm just saying, to be fair, it's not, we should do it on the next term, not halfway through a person changing the rules.
Go ahead, Counsel Decker.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I have mixed emotions about this change in the bylaw. I guess my question is, you pick, you know, disability, illness, work obligations, but, and I know most of us plan our vacations trying not to miss council meetings, but there may be an instance where you, because of a vacation, because of, you know, you don't know like a year in advance or two years, you know, if you have an opportunity to go away, that then if you go away on a vacation, that, what's gonna happen to you if you're not at the meeting and you can't, you know, zoom in to a meeting because it doesn't warrant that? So, like, what would happen in that instance? If you went away and you missed one meeting? Like, so what are the repercussions of that? Just using that as an example.
The example that you use is, according to the language that's here, you wouldn't be in the meeting. And you're allowed to miss a meeting, I think it's three consecutive meetings you're not allowed to miss, yeah. Go ahead, Counsel sentence.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. My only one problem, and I was gonna ask if there could be a friendly amendment to it, is for vacation, and I'll use myself as an example where family cottage, you have X amount of time up north, and that's all you get. This year, I hit nothing, so I won't miss anything. But in other years, you could hit, I could hit that time, and I have no choice to go. I hate missing meetings. So I don't want to miss a meeting and say, well, I'm on vacation, I can't go because I'm still eligible. So, I can see where Counsel Longo is going with this, but I would ask that some form of, you know, vacation or family, you got family obligations could be in there, so I don't have to miss. I don't want to miss a meeting if I don't have to.
So what are you asking for?
I'm asking for a friendly amendment, that we would put something in there to, in regards to, to vacation time as well.
So, Counsel Longo, would you accept that as a?
I anticipated that might come up, Mr. Mayor, but I won't accept it. Because, you know what, if you're on vacation, enjoy your family. The city will run without any of us. That may be hard for some people to understand, but it's the way councils run for decades in Thorold before COVID. People would go on holidays and miss a meeting. Enjoy yourself. So, I think that just opens the door to doing absolutely nothing here. If vacation is a reason for not coming.
Thank you. Counselor, that means that that's not a friendly amendment. If you would want to bring that amendment, it would have to be.
You could bring it now as an amendment, it wouldn't be a friendly.
It wouldn't be a friendly, so you'd need a seconder and then?
I'm good.
Good, okay. Go ahead, Counsel D'Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am concerned also when you're introducing something that affects counselors halfway through the term. Similar to a pay raise, you shouldn't get it, it should be going to the next one. If you're gonna look at amending this bylaw, because it has substantial implications. And I am like mixed. I'm a counselor who's been here for over 20 years, and I've never missed a council meeting. That's just my nature, I plan my holidays around it. But that's me. I don't want to be held in a position where I'm holding other counselors accountable. At the end of the day, if a counselor chooses to run in the next election, the public will hold them accountable to their decisions and what they've done. As Counsel Hanley mentioned, all that list of stuff he mentioned that counselors do, every single counselor in this room does that, even you, Mr. Mayor. Like, we're all doing our due diligence and trying to help our taxpayers throughout our community. And some people like us and some people don't. And that's depending on the answers you give them sometimes. But at the end of the day, I do have some concerns with this, because I also look at it, there's another issue when we're calling special meetings during the day. Some of us are still working and can't attend special meetings during the day. Like, that puts us at a disadvantage. So I don't want to put any counselors at a disadvantage when they're trying to come to meetings. Yes, I concur, they can be disruptive when we're not having the technology work the way it should. But at the end of the day, I haven't fully made my decision in terms of which way I'm going here, but I see valid points on both sides. But at the end of the day, I don't want to start pitting counselors against counselors. I'm not saying that this was specifically against one counselor, but I think we could all fall in those conditions of needing a vacation, which can be a mental health day or a mental health week, depending on the situation. So it can fall under health, as a vacation is a regeneration of an individual, and that's why they take vacation, to get away from everything and to re-energize themselves. So that does have some health implications. So, even if you change this, you can skirt around it and not, it's still be on a video conference. So I don't know if we're gonna achieve what we're trying to achieve with what's on the floor right now.
So are you, and I've heard this from a couple of people, that whatever changes we made, they would rather it not be for this term of council? I've heard that from you, I've heard that from you as well. Is there any discussion around that? Do you want to speak? Well, I'm gonna go back to Jim, but I want to ask Counsel Longo, because it's his motion.
You know, again, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to leave the motion the way it is. This isn't, although I brought the notice of motion forward, it wasn't based on my individual feelings. I've had numerous people before the motion came forward, and since the motions come forward from the community that questioned participation by counselors remotely. Just a couple of things I want to talk about here. Somebody mentioned being sick, it's in the motion. If you're sick, do it from home, by all means. I don't want you in the room if you're sick, or if you can't make it in. Counsel D'Angelo mentioned about special council meetings. This isn't about special council meetings, it's very specific. It's about our regularly-scheduled council meetings. Special council meetings, budget meetings, committee meetings, this wouldn't be affected. It's the paid counselors who, I believe, well, I believe and a number of community members believe, should be in council chambers. So, again, I'm not trying to be difficult here by not allowing any friendly amendments or anything. I just, if it stands, it stands. If it doesn't, then let the next council decide what they want to do.
Okay. And who else wanted to speak to it? Counsel Hanley, go ahead.
Counsel Dedevis make a point there about midterm, and I just want to give some legal clarification here. It's called no retroactive application. While a policy can change, it typically cannot be applied retroactively to penalize actions taken under a previous policy. Issues with this motion, I believe, is discrimination. If the policy change is seen as unfairly targeting a specific individual, which by the consensus here, counselor, I believe it is, it could also raise concerns about selective enforcement and discrimination. And also, I found out it could be a code of conduct violation, depending on local rules. Changing a policy mid-action could be considered a breach of a counselor's code of conduct, if done, and I'm not saying it is, with malicious intent to undermine a specific individual. I'm just leading, reading legal context. I wish to also state, five members of this council just voted last meeting to allow residents to vote online. For those same counselors that vote in favor of Counsel Longo's motion, you may have in fact well shown, you in fact are targeting discrimination against a specific individual, and counselors made that clear here tonight, and may be in fact acting with malicious intent. For how can one allow a citizen to be able to vote not in person, but do so electronically? But yet a counselor cannot attend a meeting electronically unless he gives a reason for doing so. To me, that is discrimination. And that is exactly what is occurring here. For the fact of the matter is, the motion specifically states, whereas it is recognized that in-person attendance by members of council are regular meetings, which are scheduled with notice to members of council and the public prior to December 1st in the preceding year. The preceding year is the year that comes before the current year. In legal context, the preceding year is a 12-month period before the start of defined event or period. So it's obviously, it's going back and targeting an individual back to December 1st. And for information purposes, I will not be attending the March 18th meeting in person for medical reasons. And I will not be attending the June 17th meeting in person because, in person because of personal reasons. And to end, 95% of residents, I put a survey online and I asked a simple question. Do you believe that counselors should be asked to attend meetings remotely via Zoom? And 95% of the residents said yes. So as like Counsel Longo, he has residents saying that he shouldn't be doing it or someone shouldn't be doing remotely, and I have residents saying that I should be able to do it remotely. So as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Mayor, if I say that I'm doing it for health reasons, legally, nothing can actually be done about it, Mr. Mayor, because I'm not an employee of the city and I don't fall under the Employment Standards Act. So as I mentioned earlier, that if I state I'm doing it for medical reasons, it cannot be questioned, and legally, I would not be obligated to divulge any medical documentation to substantiate such, for it would be legally defined as invasion of privacy. So to me, this motion is redundant, because you can pass it all you want. I will continue the practice as I had in the past, and I will state for medical reasons. And if you want to pursue the matter further, all the best to you.
Thank you, Counsel Hanley. Anyone else want to speak to the motion? We had a mover and a seconder, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion is defeated. Okay. Naming rights policy. I'll call on Counsel O'Hare for his motion respecting naming rights policy. And do you have a second, Counsel? Counsel sentence, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the City of Thorold values the generosity and community spirit of its businesses, families, and organizations, and recognizes the potential to enhance public spaces through sponsorships, whereas creating a formal policy for naming rights to city-owned properties will provide a transparent process for recognizing sponsors while generating revenue for city programs and services. Whereas such a policy will ensure that naming opportunities reflect the city's values, maintain public interest, and create lasting partnerships that benefit both the community and its donors. And whereas the Thorold City Council desires to explore best practices and options for developing a fair, equitable, and effective naming rights policy to support the city's growth and initiatives. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Corporation of the City of Thorold enacts as follows: That staff be directed to develop a naming rights policy and report back to council for consideration.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Is there anyone that wants to speak to the motion? Go ahead, Counsel DeRose.
Yeah, I'll support the motion. Just one thing I wanted to add, I don't know if it can be added, or just when staff looks at this, they can look at what we discussed in my first term of council. We talked about some roads having identical names. And even though one's called a street, one's called a road. And it pertains to my street is one of them. And I get people trying to come visit me from the US, and it takes them to the wrong handsler. And I don't know why we have to have, if we could do a review and if we can add this to the motion? I don't know, but.
I don't think this is regarding streets. This is, this is naming rights and facilities.
Oh, my bad, okay.
But that's another issue that's going to be coming to council.
I thought it was including streets also, okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to that? Do you want to speak, Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Counsel DeRose. There's a process happening right now regarding street naming. So you could also send an email off to planning with that concern.
Thank you, I read something about it, I thought it was that on the same ticket. Okay, thank you.
The only thing that I would like to see addressed in this motion when staff does it is, in perpetuity, you know what I mean? Like, sometimes people pay for naming rights. There should be a length of time associated with that. In perpetuity, sometimes it creates issues, so I think it's something we need to really look at. If, in perpetuity, may be okay if the sponsorship allotted to that makes sense. But you know where I'm coming from. Anyways, it's, go ahead, Counsel Hanley.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, actually, I was gonna bring up the same thing, very good point, naming rights. I was gonna ask, how long would the rights last? 20 years, 25 years, et cetera? That needs to be part of the process. I agree with Counsel O'Hare's motion. Also, we need a vetting process when we come through this highest bidder, you know? How are we gonna do it? You know, you wouldn't want someone say we're gonna bid out there, and then the person who's the highest bidder is someone that maybe the city really doesn't want to name that place off, over. So, we need a voting, a vetting process, too. And then we need to look at groups, you know, and specific groups, and if they were to both offer the same, like, who chooses the winner? So, it's a great motion and that stuff. I think it's great, naming rights, it brings revenue to the city, it helps with paying for projects. You know, like the Doc Hannah Memorial Arena or whatever, down in St. Catherine's type of deal. Same with the Walkers facility, so I agree with the motion that's up, and we just gotta do a little tweak in regards to the vetting process, naming rights, as you mentioned, so on and so forth. But a motion I will support.
Thank you, and we look forward to the staff report. Go ahead, Counsel D'Angelo.
Also, Mr. Mayor, also, I want to make sure we include the de-naming rights also. There may be criteria where someone's name is on a building, and then later, something happens, so the city has to have some opportunity to get out of that naming if need be. So I think if there's other policies in other communities, I think that needs to be explored, too. Not that you hope for it, but things do happen and sometimes.
No, no, it's a point well taken.
You find out, you don't want to have something named after the wrong person.
Yeah, that's good, so, I think staff's been privy to this conversation, and wholesome report will come back. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Youth Community Liaison Group, and I'll call on Counsel Sentence for his motion, and I'm gonna second that one. And the reason is, I've asked Counsel Sentence to bring this forward because I didn't want to leave the chair, and this is something I've been working on with students from Thorold High School. Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas Thorold City Council recognizes the importance of engaging youth in local governance and providing opportunities for them to actively participate in the decision-making process that impact their community. Whereas high school students represent a valuable and often unrepresented perspective that can provide fresh insights and feedback on events, services, and initiatives within the city. And whereas the establishment of a mayor's youth community liaison group would create a channel for students from local high schools to contribute their views and recommendations to city staff, fostering a sense of civic responsibility and community involvement among young residents. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city, that the Corporation of the City of Thorold enacts, one, that staff be directed to perform the work necessary to form a mayor's youth community liaison group, including the drafting of terms of reference laying out the purpose, composition, and meeting schedule of the liaison group, and report back to council for final approval.
Thank you, Counsel. Is there any discussion regarding that? Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring up, we've had one in the past when I was mayor and I introduced it. So the Terms of Reference are there, they were a great group of young individuals, and they really supported the, at the time, it was the Mayor's Candidate Day celebrations, now turned into the Candidate Day celebrations. But they did a lot of work to have events regarding that particular one. They did movie night at Battle of Beaverton's Park, they did a murder mystery at Kiefer Mansion. They were fabulous, like 100%, I'd support this, no problem. I think we have some great young adults out there, and it gives them an opportunity to get a bit of a flavor of how council runs, too. And then also make great impacts to our community from a youth perspective. So I'm 100% behind this.
And the reason why we had to bring this back up is because you're right, we had a strong group, but then it fell, you know, it didn't sustain itself. And then when we revamped the committees, this wasn't addressed, and so we had to make sure it's back in, because we now have a group that wants to, you know, work at reinstituting it. And so we'll work with Thorold High and Dennis Morris and. And so we'll work with Thorold High and Dennis Morris and, uh, and I think it'll be great for the community, so. Okay, go ahead councillor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll fully support this. This is a great initiative. Some of you know I'm a retired teacher and, uh, the rewards that come out of a program like this are sometimes life-changing. Uh, the, the, the rewards come back to the city. They certainly come back to the school, the students. It's just such a win-win situation, so well done for bringing this, uh, to council.
Okay. Any further discussion? Councillor Hanley, did you want to say anything? I see your hand up.
No, Mr. Mayor, I forgot to lower it, sorry.
Okay. Okay, we got a mover and a second or. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Fourteen-four, Bolton Avenue and Crompton Boulevard Infrastructure Project. And I'll call on councillor Sentence for his motion. And do you have a second or? Who is it?
Me.
Oh, councillor Decker. Okay, go ahead councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, whereas Thorold City Council recognizes the importance of in, oh. Whereas the Bolton Avenue and Crompton Boulevard Infrastructure Replacement Project has been designated as a priority initiative. And whereas staff has increased the frequency of inspections and routine maintenance in the area to reduce the risk of service disruptions and potential property damage. Whereas it is essential to confirm the construction timeline for effective planning and coordination between staff and property owners. And whereas the current ten-year capital forecast tentatively projects the commencement of the construction phase for this project in 2026, now therefore be it resolved that the Corporation of the City of Thorold enacts as follows. The council directs staff to include the Bolton Avenue and Crompton Boulevard Infrastructure Replacement Project in the 2026 capital budget. Can I speak to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, the reason I bring this forward is I, I've met with, uh, staff and some residents that we all know in that area. And this has been pushed back and back and back. And with us, you know, having one more year left, um, these people deal with flooding issues. They deal with problems in their yards, um, and it's over and over. One, one, uh, group said they've been there since two thousand and eight and they've had issues since then. Um, and it's not gonna get better as it goes on and it could get really bad. So the reason I'm bringing this forward is to make sure that this is encompassed in the next budget for these people and for us to fulfill what we're, uh, what I think we should be doing. So I hope, uh, everyone supports it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hanley, go ahead.
I definitely support it. Uh, council may remember before this actual term, in 2021, I brought a notice of motion forward. We, we actually took fifty thousand dollars out of another design phase because I had brought up then and was supported from council that we should be doing Crompton, Queen Street South between Richmond and Bolton and the Bolton Avenue at the same time. And I brought this up far, four years ago, because as councillor Sentence said, it was pushed back. And I believe it continues to push back because it's a very complicated project. A lot of councillors might not be aware, but the current sewer structure in fact is not on the street. It runs behind all the homes in a laneway that goes between Richmond Street and Bolton Avenue on the north side. And on the south side of Bolton Avenue, the sewers run along the fence on the highway corridor behind the houses on Bolton. And all the services we have then be, have to be changed from the rear of the homes to the front of the homes. So I know that's what's been one of the contentious issues with this, and we do need to move forward with it. Sooner than later, I support it a hundred percent, as I mentioned. I brought this up in 2021 and we began to delayed it, we delayed it, we delayed it, delayed it. So I support it a hundred percent. It's about time we address this issue once and for all, instead of putting it on the back burner year after year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, customer reservice response times. I'll call on councillor D'Avitas for his motion. And do you have a second or councillor? Councillor DeRose, go ahead.
Um, whereas ensuring timely, fair and consistent response to customer and stakeholders' inquiries and complaints is essential in to maintaining public trust and satisfaction in our services. And whereas clear standards and guidelines for communication help promote service excellence and strengthen relationship between council and the public. Whereas maintaining such a policy will support the goal of consistently delivering high-quality service and improving the overall customer experience for all the stakeholders. Now there, it would be resolved that the Corporation of the City of Thorold enacts the follows. The staff be directed to report back to council with recommend amendments to the city's complaints and handling policy. Can I speak on this?
Yes, you can. Go ahead councillor.
This is so important, probably one of the most important policies in any business is customer service. And the response time is, is a big part of that. Uh, I'd like to see staff look at A.I. options. Other municipalities are doing it through Ontario, this could help. I spoke to St. Catherine's Jonathan, the, the, he's a manager of customer services, a group and a municipal, uh, different municipality members on this group. And they meet once a month talking about how they can improve customer service and response times. And I think maybe Thorold should be a part of that group.
Can I just ask a question? Because, um, it says city's complaints handling policy. Should it be city's customer service handling policy?
Well, initially, when I first brought this, I wanted to see...
That's the name of the, because the policy encompasses more than complaints.
Nicholas put in the group.
Yeah, so, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, it's designed to be open-ended to kind of take a look at that policy to maybe streamline and, um...
Yeah, because I, uh, there's people that are, are calling for inquiries that aren't complaints, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead councillor Decker.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, I know we have a complaints, um, line that people can call, uh, when, when they are having issues and then it gets directed to the right departments. I don't know, maybe Minogue, uh, Minogue can elaborate on that. I guess my question is, is if we want a council to report back and you want to include this A.I., then there, there would have to be some, what the costs would be associated with that as well? Would that have to be in this report? And usually, our complaints department, what is the timelines for return calls? Is it like twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours? Like, do we have an answer to that or?
That should all be, come back with the recommendation, but those are good points, well taken.
Can I comment? I think A.I., like, was through St. Catherine's, they have hundreds and hundreds in Toronto. All these cities do that. And what's gonna help staff is a lot of these little, little complaints and asking questions, A.I. will be able to handle that and streamline staff so they have more free time. How to do a pool permit, how to do this, how to do that. And they don't have to respond to all these trivia little calls and questions. So it'll free up some more time so they can concentrate on the, on the big fish to fry. Because it's gonna be a big effective, uh, tool in our toolbox.
Councillor O'Hare, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, uh, to councillor, uh, D'Avitas. Um, so first question is, is this across all departments in the city? Is that what we're looking at? So whether it's planning or building or...
Yes, I need, I think we have to focus on customer service response times.
That should be a city-wide, but I'll have, I know it should come.
Need a policy.
Thank you councillor D'Avitas. It's a pretty, very, very good, uh, question. We will look at it more holistically. As you're aware, as part of our strategic plan, customer service is a very important part of it. And staff has done quite significant, uh, worked quite significantly in improving that. Our website has been improved, we are communicating, uh, through external newsletters. There are a number of initiatives that we are there, how we are reaching out to, uh, our residents. Let's talk authorities on examples, all our infrastructure projects, they can comment on it. So when we do bring this back, we will look at it more holistically, how we can make the customer service experience better for the residents. Thank you.
That's great, because they blame staff, but it's not the staff's problem. It's just so many calls, so much emails that nobody can do it. That's why you need to look at this policy, adjust this and modernize it and go forward.
Thank you councillor O'Hare.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, once again, uh, I'm just hoping that this will include a response times to all questions that come through the city, uh, even if it's a, an acknowledgement as opposed to a definitive answer. Yes, we've received your, uh, your inquiry and we will be, uh, looking into it and we'll get back to you. I think that's really important, rather than a, a non-return call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And, uh, I have one statement by councillor, councillor Hanley, uh, please, you got the floor on, uh...
I was just gonna reiterate what you had said earlier, Mr. Mayor, regards to the snow removal and whatnot. I had been in touch with some residents and that stuff, you know, and they had concerns and want to, some want to praise the city, some wanted to argue about their cars. But overall, I just want to reiterate what you said, it was a great job from what I could see and from what information I had gathered. So I commend everybody for a job well done during the recent snowstorms you have been experiencing there in Canada.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Before I ask for a mover and a second or to go into closed session, uh, I would like to remind you of your obligation respecting closed session. Those who are participating electronically in closed session must ensure that no other person is in the location from which they are taking part in the meeting or make appropriate arrangements, so that any other person cannot see or hear any of the confidential deliberations taking place. If this is not possible, you must withdraw from the meeting until it is reconvened in open session. Council staff and everyone present during the closed session have an obligation to ensure what is discussed in closed session is kept confidential. And now we'll read the motion on the screen of the why we're going into closed session. Okay. That council do now move into closed session to receive confidential information respecting a matter respecting, I can't read this corner here with these. A matter respecting, uh, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board under section two thirty-nine, two C of the Municipal Act, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board under section two thirty-nine, two K of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, Confederation West Tulip Tree Drive Neighborhood Noise Wall Encroachment. A matter, number two, a matter respecting litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board under section two thirty-nine, two E of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose under section two thirty-nine, two F of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board under section two thirty-nine, two K of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, application by Park Bridge Lifestyle Communities. Can I get a mover and a second or to go into closed section? I got councillor DeRose and councillor Sentence. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. So we will take a couple of minutes and then...